I solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
And I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
That I will obey and support the Constitution.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support and.
The Constitution. The Constitution of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge my duties, uh, of my office with fidelity.
Okay, that's it, and then we'll just have you sign right here. You'll be official.
Hello, how are you? You look very nice.
Thank you. I can go forward with the agenda starting with. Just move to the people of the agenda, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for today's, tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, all on paper.
Aye.
Alright, we'll go ahead and start with the, um. Let's report.
Great, I'm excited to share, we had another strategic planning session on June 9th. Um, we had a great turnout, we had, um, two students that came to represent and, um, parents and, um, teachers, just really all of our stakeholders that were part of this process. Um, this session was a little different than the first one, the first one was really drilling into all of the data that was collected from the community, um, and, you know, all of our achievement data. And so, this session is sort of looking at the data, we'd already identified some pillars. So it was really looking at the two pillars that were identified from the data in the last meeting, and really looking at, where do we go from here, what are those initiatives that could align? Uh, we reviewed, um, some, um, evidence-based strategies, um, and then split into groups to kind of talk about what are some things that we can move forward with. So it was a really exciting session, Nan was there, she can share her thoughts on it. And then I just wanted to kind of share what the next steps would be. Well, first, just to remind you of the pillars, we talked about them previously, but the two pillars at this point are unite and engage and educate and empower. Um, so that, that's kind of leading out on what, what we're working on. And then coming up, um, in the fall, as we continue this work in the fall, um, these are kind of the next steps. So we'll engage the community in some of the feedback processes of the work that we are generating. That will also include coming to the board for your feedback as well. Um, and then looking at prioritizing what will be our final goals and initiatives for the strategic plan. And then, um, then we'll move into, what does it look like as we create systems and processes that track the district's goals, what data will be needed, how are we going to ensure that these initiatives are being implemented? And then really, the last part is developing that external messaging of how do we show this in the community in a very friendly way so they understand what we're all united to work on in our strategic plan. So those are our next steps, and I'm excited to see where our wonderful team goes next.
Yeah, I would like to shi-, uh, express, I, it, it was a very useful, it was a very intensive meeting. We were all a little bit, uh, zombie-ish towards the end, but it was very productive. And also, I think there was a very common theme that we do want to be united and that we do want to include the community. I think that input will empower us to educate and unite and empower all those things, you know, the students, which is our main goal. And so, it was, it was very good, thank you.
We're gonna discuss several policies next, I think, was there, that was the next thing, right? My computer is not connected to the internet, so I don't know.
First policy I got Jared with me, it's our policy eighty-three-ten, it's our district data security. We brought this to the board, um, last fall, so this is our second reading. At that time, the board didn't answer some questions and they asked us to take it back and fix just a few grammatical errors and then add the state code for reference, so that's the only change that we made. To those of you who saw it in the fall, for the new board members, if you have technical questions, that's what Jared's here for and I think this, and the old as well. But, really this policy was changed to address, uh, the biometric data that we're required to address, since we do take that, um, data from employees, analyze our data privacy and data breach procedures with state code. So that, that's kind of overview of this policy, I guess, do the board have questions about any of the technical aspects of the policy?
I didn't have any questions, but I wanted to leave it open to anyone else.
So it was just the, um, the, um, red marks were just the corrections.
Those are the changes, yeah, so the big changes were adding biometric data, um, changing our protocols for any data breaches, um, and the, the data privacy. And then the other sporadic red marks was just us correcting grammatical things in the policy.
Okay, yeah.
So, no questions?
Yeah, if you had any questions regarding that one.
Thanks Jared.
Thanks Jared.
Alright, we'll move on to the next policy listed as policy twenty-two-ten. It is the school district organization eligibility qualifications and responsibility. Um, this is about the board members, we've made some very minor revisions to this policy. As the board has developed and is implementing their board handbook, we felt that it was important to reference that handbook in our policy so that people know what's kind of driving the, the procedures and the roles of our board members. So that is the, there's about one sentence added in there, the only other changes made in this policy were updating some state codes that needed updated.
I wanted to clarify that, uh, part of this is from the handbook. How do people access the handbook if they want to know how the board is supposed to be operating?
We don't currently have that listed on our website anywhere, I mean, it's been in our past board agendas, but we, we could definitely link that handbook if the board wanted us to.
I feel like that's a good idea, just because we reference it in policy, but if people don't know what it is.
There's a link on our website for board, could it maybe go onto there?
Yeah.
Under school board members.
I didn't mean to add extra, but.
No, no, I'm done, I'm just taking notes, I don't forget.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like just as another item on that list, is that what you're recommending, Board Member Nielsen?
Yeah.
Yeah, just put it as just another list on there.
There's an option to.
Okay, we can do that.
They can also come in and request the, like they wanted a hardback too, right, or a, okay.
Hard copy.
Hard copy, yes. Anything else, or?
Okay, next policy is policy sixty-five-sixty-eight, student conduct and discipline interfering devices. Um, for the upcoming school year, we are required to have a policy prohibiting, um, cellphones, smartwatches, and emerging technology use during classroom hours. So, we've updated, updated this existing policy that already addressed the use of some other electronic devices or interfering devices, um, to include the necessary language regarding the cellphone, smartwatch, and emerging technology. So we have the definitions for what is a classroom hour, what fits under each of those categories. And then, just for the board's reference, the assistant superintendents, the prin-, and the principals have reviewed this policy. We also received input from the student advisory committee on, on how this policy could be effective and rolled out at the schools.
And this is required by state law now?
Correct.
So in the past, we have had individual schools that had their own policies. And now, we have a district.
A district-wide policy, we did add language in this policy that allows the schools to have more restrictive or strict rules at the school level, but they all have to meet at least this minimum criteria.
Yeah, and I can speak to some of this and also talk about practice. So, wh- what the state has required us is stay during instructional time, classroom time. So this allows some flexibility for schools that have open campus, it would be next to impossible to enforce this during lunch, right? Because students are coming and going from the campus. Schools that are closed campus could choose if they wanted to, to, um, extend that during lunchtime. So we kind of took the stance of allowing some flexibility, um, within the policy for schools to develop some of that. Just wanted to share a couple of things we've been working on with administrators. Just, this is a potential poster that can go throughout the school to help communicate, it can also be sent home to communicate. What are the benefits, why are we moving to a no cellphone policy? And then, um, we also have developed kind of what will happen if you do bring your phone, so I'd love to just kind of go over this with you. Um, it's basically, um, parent-friendly messaging and student-friendly, but the first offense, if a student has their phone visible during instructional time, so that's kind of what we're looking at. Some school districts have phone lockers and those types of things, so we've left some flexibility, um, for school community councils to help inform what they would like to do in the school with phones. So, some have like a pocket on the door, there's a variety of ways they could go about that. So that, that's gonna be school-based, but what they can't have is the phone visible during instructional time. So, a first offense, the phone, um, the teacher would ask the, the student to put their device in whatever the school locker might be, they'll have some type of, you know, holding area. And then administration will pick up that phone and then, um, meet with the student at the end of the day, and the student can pick up that phone, so that's kind of a check-in with the student, give him the chance to understand what they need to do and reset. The second offense, the phone again would go into whatever the holding device is, admin would pick it up, and then a parent or guardian has to come to the school and pick up the phone, so they would have a conversation with the student and the parents on the second offense. Um, the third offense, uh, the process would follow the same as step two, except for they would develop a plan of, how can we better support you not to have your phone during instructional time? The, these, um, these steps were, were chosen, and, uh, we got feedback from our student advisory council. And, a couple of the scho-, I mean, our schools already have somewhat of a cellphone policy. San Juan High and Monticello, um, has implemented something this past year that was kind of based upon the school community council input, student government input, and so, it was really great to get that feedback from what worked well in their schools and what did not work well in their schools. Part of, um, where this came from is they reviewed a number of policies and practices in other school districts, and this is one they felt like could work well for San Juan, and they were supportive of. Their other recommendation is for when they kick this off at the beginning of the year, that it's students that are explaining why we're doing this, what is gonna happen, what happened, what, what's gonna happen. So our principals are gonna work with students to help launch this in their opening assembly. It will go in the student handbook, um, so we would like the policy approved today if possible so that we can work on having that student handbook piece in there as well. Really, you know, one of our concerns is, we don't want to harm the relationship between a, a student and a teacher, so really the thinking is, if at all possible, we want, we don't want the teacher to ever have to touch the cellphone. So our thinking is that the student will just put it right in there, admin takes it from there. We know from talking to other school districts who have implemented this, that the very beginning, it can be a burden, burdensome to administrators, but if they stay on it and do it, then that kind of goes away. And that, that's really what we're hearing from other school districts, that they've been working on this as well. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about this process.
I think the only thing I would, um, say, Kristi, or superintendent, is that where the parents and guardians would arrange pickup, they don't necessarily have to be the ones to come in, um, because we know that can be difficult for parents, but there do, does need to be contact with the parent or guardian for that phone to be picked up.
I had a question, um, I know one of the big things that are gonna be included in this conversation is AirPods. Is that gonna be under?
So, in, in the policy, we do have that under, um, the interfering device as, as the AirPods or, or headphones.
I have a couple of questions, um, is there, has there been any voice, voiced for, any support voiced for a standard policy across the district, or do they really feel that there's some value in having some school leeway there? And, cause I can see pros and constables sides of that. And two, if we stay with some school leeway, will we ensure that, you were talking about this policy going in all their handbooks, will, will that be clear, the school stand? Everything that the school is gonna enforce will be very well laid out for parents?
Yeah, so, so, uh, what, the feedback, based on the feedback and what our recommendation is, um, for this policy and for implementation, is that instructional time, no phones, you can't see them, same with AirPods, headphones, out of sight. So some schools may decide that they want to have a pouch or a lot of cellphone holder, the student comes in and puts it in there. Some schools just want it out of sight, like they want it in their backpack, they don't want to see it, can't be anywhere visible. So, I think allowing some leeway there, um, you know, some of our schools have other concerns about, well, if I put it here, where is it gonna be, like, I, I, there's a variety of concerns. And then the management from the teacher's side of what is required to have to ensure that everyone's device is in there or not, which really, we may not even know they have a cellphone with them, and if they put it in there, if it is in their bag. So some of this was really thinking about allowing for some flexibility, meeting the need, right? The need is, we don't want cellphones out during instructional time, because you can see from the other list, the benefits of the school-free zone. But, by making it a little bit flexible, as issues come up or something comes up, they can get a little tighter, or they can get a little looser, depending on what the needs are. We don't want to disrupt learning, that's really what this is all about, right? To allow a better learning environment, so if we consider, you know, whatever we implement needs to work for the learning environment. So I think allowing schools to have a little flexibility to get tighter or get looser, I think that would be my recommendation, and, and that is what principals have also asked for. I think also, you currently have Monticello High School and San Juan High who have rolled this out the past year, and they have two different ways of handling that a little bit, so where they've already started on that process, we also don't want to take a step back, um, there as well. Um, I will say, you know, in the conversation, we know, and stu-, this is coming from students who are so helpful that we get their input now with this council and from other students, is that oftentimes, it works, they get on, they're doing really well at the beginning, and then, if a teacher isn't enforcing it, then they get their cellphones out, right? So, part of this is thinking, how can we take the burden off teachers so that teachers are all implementing this? It won't work if you have some teachers that do and some teachers that don't, so it's kind of the stance we're taking right now. With practice, you know, we can change that at any time, if we feel like this isn't working in October, you know, we can change practice and do the same thing across the board. Um, I know that White Horse High School already has, you know, what, what they're doing, so I also don't want to take a step back with them and say, now you have to do that. So, that is our recommendation, now I don't know if that, does that answer all of your questions?
Well, yeah, so you, it will be clearly communicated if the school has any additional requirements.
Yes, so what they put in their student handbook will, will say, yes.
Will just be this policy, and then they'll say, oh, but there's a little more that we never got in our po-, on our.
No, all of that will be communicated.
And then.
And, and we're working on right now possibly putting something in registration materials that will be rolled out in July, um, that maybe that is part of, cause that handbook will be on there for registration, but we kind of feel like since this is new, we need to maybe highlight that as well, so that might be an additional, we're working on that today determining if we should do that.
And you talked about consistency of teachers, should there be a statement in here that teachers are required by district policy to enforce this in classrooms? I mean, do we need to go to that step to ensure that?
We definitely could, but.
Just, teachers don't just choose to be Mister, I don't know, I don't know how to word that, but anyway, overlook it?
And I guess.
Not take it serious?
My wondering with that is, don't we enforce all of our policies? Don't teachers have to enforce all of our policies? But we feel like it would be helpful, it wouldn't, I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be difficult to add a sentence adding that in.
I think you're right, though, we do.
And, and we did talk, um, in secondary breakout with principals about how did they manage this when teachers weren't enforcing it? And so, they shared a number of ideas of different ways that they have helped with that.
And I felt like the principals also felt like they would have more teeth in enforcing it now that it was, there was a policy, and, and that the policy is in line with state code, so it's not just a district policy but state law. So that was kind of the feedback I heard from the principals was, where they might have had some concerns with a few teachers, now they have some more teeth because we have a policy to follow, not just a school procedure.
To Ron's point, though, um, are you expecting any, uh, pushback from the parents?
You know, we already sometimes have some parents who are like, you can't take my student's cellphone away, I own that, you know, that's not your right, but we do have the right to do that if it's disrupting education. So, um, I think we'll continue to have some of those. I think, um, there's a lot, this is in the media, this is across the state, so I'm hoping that parents are hearing this, we'll do our own kind of PR, um, to help parents understand. But, there may be some that are still, you know, and, and, and I would, what I would address with that is that I do think where parents are coming from is that if there's an emergency, they want to be able to get ahold of their student. If there is a safety incident going on in the school, they want to get ahold of their student. So, you know, we have talked through that, you know, that's part of our messaging as well, if it says on the.
And that, that is in the policy, that if there's an, uh, an emergency, a health emergency, or they need to contact Safe UT, that it is an appropriate use of cellphone during school.
And, and it, this document actually says, I mean, I'll just read to you what it says. "We believe that a strong partnership between home and school is key to student success," at whichever school it is. "To help your student get the most out of their learning experience, please ensure they come to school each day ready to engage. We also kindly request that you avoid texting your student during class, as this can interrupt their focus in the learning environment. If you need to reach your student during school hours due to a family emergency, please contact the main office directly." So, I mean, they could look at their phone, you know, while they're transitioning, so if there's a text from home, but really, this is saying, if there really truly is an emergency, contact the office, we'll, we'll communicate your student immediately. For those of us who grew up in a non-cellphone era, that's how it used to be, but I know that's difficult for parents that want to communicate something, but, but we will ensure that. And then again, you know, an emergency situation, of course, a student, you know, if we're in lockdown, that's something that is available to them.
And, we do have liaisons in every school that communicates with all the parents, and if parents didn't understand, the liaison's there for that.
Yeah, and I think that, the idea is, we're rolling this out for the first time, so we gotta work through some of these bumps along the road and educate parents, educate students, and it'll get better over time, so.
Yeah.
And I think along with what everybody is saying is, if we can continue the PR with the student orientation at the beginning of the year to help to reinforce that, that would be great. I mean, all it takes is a simple conversation or an, an assembly, where we can encourage SEC, and this is where they would get it, you know, if they wanted to make a change or something like that, that's where we could, but they have to participate as well.
I just want to say thank you for bringing it to us now, I think getting ahead of it, ahead of the school year is critical, and I hope everyone here kind of understands that aspect of the policy as well. We can always tweak it in the future, but adapting it, adopting it now is, in my opinion, a good plan, so. Any other questions, or should we move forward to the next?
Alright, our next policy is policy sixty-six-ten, student activities, extracurricular activities. Um, this policy also has minor revisions, this section, um, I would like to direct your attention to is sixty-six-ten-point-five, item number two. Um, we added the requirement that students, um, be enrolled in at least half of the high schools' scheduled, scheduled periods to participate in an extracurricular activity, that's the big change to this. It looks like there's a lot of other changes, big changes, but really, the rest of it is just updating definitions um, to align with what's current student, or state code is. So the, the biggest change to this policy really is, um, item number two, our requirement, um, for students to be enrolled or participate in our extracurricular activities.
So, I can just kind of address this change, so the policy, um, has always indicated that we will follow the Utah High School Activities Association regulations. Last year, which, which in the past has been, the student has to be enrolled at least half-time. Um, last year, that changed, and they said seniors can take one course and still participate, under UHSAA. So this is a change we're recommending to go back to what historically has been done in San Juan School District, um, to have students be at least half-time to participate in extracurricular. Um, so that's, that's really what this change is about, we've had one year that was different than it's ever been, and we're asking to go back to that, which we, you as a school board can make that decision, um, you know, just as long as, we're still following Utah High School Activities Association guidelines, we're just making it a little bit more stringent than what they have done with that one, one grade level.
And is it possible to be involved in CTE courses or college courses and still be considered half-time?
Yeah, so if you're doing CTE concurrent enrollment, those all count as a, a school credit.
Um, I had a question about, um, the portion under, uh, junior high or middle schools, it says it gets redlined out, the health examination must be.
Yeah, so that, that actually was requiring us provide our own form, and all of our, our junior high is doing the register my athlete, just like the high school is. So, so they're still required to get the physical, but, but this, um, language in this policy indicated that we had a, a separate form for junior high schools.
Okay, so they still have to get a physical, it's just not that junior high has.
Something different.
Something different, okay, thank you.
Can I just cover a few things of interest to me? That I think have come up in the past, but I just want to make sure. So on two of five, sixty-six-ten-point-four, on number one, "School shall schedule contests and activities with other San Juan School District schools prior to seeking competition from other schools outside the district." I just want you to be aware that that's a tricky statement, I've seen it play out, and even just in the recent years, when there haven't felt like there's a balance of competition, we have schools that are refusing to play.
At the junior high level?
At the junior high level, in district schools, so I don't know if that's something we're that worried about or not at this point, but it is not in accordance with this policy, so just be aware of that. I mean, I guess we ought to just be aware of that. And then over to page three of five, um, sixty-six-ten, it's number nine, so it'd be. Says San Juan schools, it's just below the, the, the contest limitation numbers, page three of five, there we go. So, yeah, number nine right there. "San Juan school districts that sponsor cross-country and wrestling events will accept sixth-grade students as unattached or independent." This is actually coming out of number eight, because in number eight, we talk about how if you have a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school, sixth is part of that school, they can participate. But where you have a seven through twelve, and, and those seventh and eighth can participate, but where you have a K through six, those sixth cannot, so to be kind of, um, compassionate as possible to that situation, sixth graders were allowed to participate as an independent. Well, I've seen a lot in the area of track and field, so I just want, that's what I wanted to point out, is in number nine, we specifically mentioned cross-country and wrestling. But, uh, in the last two years, track and field, I've seen probably as many there as anywhere. So we might, I don't know if we want to add it, or just know that it's happening, but it's beyond just cross-country and wrestling.
And I think your recommendation, we should add it, that would be my recommendation as well, if we're seeing that. I think the more we can have our policy aligned to what our, what our practice is, is the way to go, and we're updating this policy now, so I think that would be a great recommendation if the board wants that, when you.
And one we remember, and it says this right here, when they, when they participate as a, as a independent, there shouldn't be a school uniform, there shouldn't, you know, the parents, at that point, accept the responsibility to transport, shouldn't be on a school bus, they are, they have the, we, we have provided the opportunity for participation, but we have not assumed the responsibility of the cost and the liability, is the way I've always understood that, so.
And that needs to be worded, that should be worded in the policy as well.
I know, we can add it, but it, I mean, it, it says, assumes the responsibility and costs associated with the participation in the event in compliance with all school policies and procedures.
And then my last question would be on page five of five, supervisory conduct, you're deleting that clause, I was just wondering.
Yeah, I was, I wonder, I figured someone would ask about that. Um, the reason I deleted that, because that is already addressed in other policies.
That's what I wondered. That's what I wondered.
That this behavior's not acceptable, so I didn't feel it needed to be duplicated here.
Because like all the other policies, we're putting it up at the beginning of, to be attached or to refer to that, right?
Yeah, so that way when we're, if there's any discipline, we can just refer the policy that's really addressing that and not just this one, yeah. It just simplifies it, put it in one place.
Perfect.
No.
Okay, thanks Laura.
Hey, I'm still here.
I know, I know.
The next one is Policy 4128, it's Salary Supplement for Highly Needed Educator, or the acronym is SHINE. This is a brand-new policy. The SHINE program is replacing the state's TSSP, Teacher Salary Supplement Program. So the TSSP was run similarly to how the SHINE is intended to run, it's to help retain and recruit teachers in highly needed fields or hard-to-fill positions. The TSSP is going away, and so now they kind of place that back on the districts, which I think is a good thing. It allows the district to identify what their high-need positions are and not just have it at a state level. So now it's a district-run program instead of a USBE-run program. So this policy, like I said, allows us to designate our high-need areas, and not only just this year, but requires us to annually revisit that to see if any changes are needed to that, to those high needs.
I think we're on the right.
And then it also helps us define who an eligible teacher is, and the application process for the supplement program. These funds are based on our student enrollment, our October 1 student enrollment count, so we get our allotment, and then we have in there what, right now, based off of the estimated allotment that we will receive for upcoming year, what teachers in those high-need areas could receive.
So I just want to address the elementary K3, why that is on there. The state now mandates that all K3 teachers have a letter certification, which is an intensive two-year additional certification that has not been required in the past. So as we look at that from the district standpoint, we want teachers that are certified in letters, that helps with our outcomes for students. We realize the burden that it places on teachers, so we really want to retain those teachers that have completed that certification, so in order for a K3 teacher to get this SHINE additional incentive, they have to be certified in letters. So we're hoping this will help us recruit and retain teachers that have that certification. It also saves costs for the district, because in the beginning, the state provided the training for letters and covered that cost, that is no longer the case, so we are picking up some of that cost as well, so we're hoping that will help keep that cost down.
So any K3 teacher that has their letters would qualify?
Yep, if they've completed it and are certified.
And the amount would be based on our allocation divided up with about?
Yeah, so based off of, we went through, just did a rough estimate of the teachers that we feel fit the different eligibility areas and high-need areas that we're listing, and use the allocation that we provided our estimate, and so that's where we came up with the amount in the policy.
Can you pull it up, Mason, I can't remember exactly what it was.
Go to the next page. I have the numbers, I can tell you what they are.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So our 712 math, science, and K12 special education is $2,500, that's based upon 100% of their time being in those roles. And elementary education, letter-certified K3 would be $1,000.
Yeah, and I'm glad you said based off their assignment, because this could be prorated based off of number of periods they actually teach in that content area, their FTE if they're not full-time, so we have that spelled out as well, about how that amount could be prorated.
And each year, this policy will likely come back, because we won't know the allocation, you know?
Well, yeah, we'll have to update that year to year if that changes, and then also, as we're in our recruiting and hiring season, when we recognize some of these harder-to-fill positions, then we could update the policy to address those needs as well, so.
Is there a way to write the policy, I mean, is this the best way to have this policy so specific to the amount, or would you write it in a way that said we will?
We're required, we're required to put an amount in the policy.
Okay, then this is the best way.
Yeah.
And this is an opt-in program from the state, so we're not mandated, if you're looking at me, so I wanted to make sure I'm correct.
We have several teachers that are taking advantage of the TSSP program, so, and a lot of our areas, you know, special ed, science, math are already in TSSP, so that way these teachers are continuing that, because those are hard-to-fill positions.
And that's also part of the reason the allocation could change, because it's based upon what funding's available, but also who's participating in the program, so.
And the student enrollment.
So to meet state code, we have to have an amount, but it can be changed, is that kind of what you were?
We'll be required to update that, because our allocation could change year to year, yeah.
And one other question, what is this item at the end? Is it supposed to be on the postpartum grant to leave?
Oh, I just think my header didn't change across the board. I use the same template and it didn't change, I thought I fixed it everywhere.
Well, maybe it, yeah, maybe it's just.
Yeah, it's just that the heading didn't change on that page.
Okay, yeah, I was like, that's a different number, is it even?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're replacing an old policy?
No, this is a new policy, it's replacing a state program with a district-run program.
Okay.
So the TSSP's going away, and in its place is the SHINE.
And just reiterate that to me again, it's for, it's not, this is just the minimum of what the policy could be, because it could change with the monies allocated, as well as what the teachers are, where the certification comes in with that, right?
Yeah, so annually, we're required to review our high-need areas and update the policy if needed, and then the allocation amount would need to be updated if that changes as well.
Okay, so if a teacher was concerned today and had a question to it, this would just be the minimum as to what the policy would be in.
So the only teachers that would qualify for the supplement program are anyone with the, that meets the eligibility criteria in K12 special ed, 712 math, 712 science, and then the K3 with the letters training. So if there's teachers outside of those areas that feel they should get this, I mean, it really is based on the needs of the district, the positions that we're having a hard time retaining and filling.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, our next policy is Policy 6560, this is the Student Bullying, Cyberbullying, Hazing, and Retaliation Policy. It is the second reading, but the first reading was some time ago, so we can revisit as much of this as we need to. You will notice this is not a redline policy, because we have essentially just rewritten the entire 6560 to match all of the new requirements from the last two legislative sessions. After your last viewing, the biggest changes in this policy is the definition for bullying has changed significantly, it's on the first page, oh, there you go, Mason. So this one went from the physical or mental harm of a student based off of a power differential to really laying out the hostile environment, and then I think the part that is the biggest change is number C on there, of what is not bullying, so not the ordinary horseplay, arguments, or peer conflict, is spelled out in the policy now. The other change from the latest legislative session that was not in the former policy you viewed, is the requirement that students cannot record and then share a recording of bullying, if the purpose of sharing that is to incite or encourage additional acts of bullying. So they can record it to share with an administrator for reporting purposes, but not to continue to share with other students if the purpose is to encourage additional bullying. So those are the big changes from the last time we reviewed this policy. The policy was viewed by the school SEC members, principals, and then we did have a session with the student advisory committee and went over different aspects of this policy, where we got their feedback as well. With the changes to this policy, we are also recommending retiring Policy 6565, that is also about bullying, so that way we don't have two separate, potentially conflicting bullying policy for students.
I wanted to clarify, this is regarding students, we also have a policy regarding employers.
Yeah, so the next policy on the list is the employee one, which is very similar, it obviously does not have the student-specific, like contacting your parents and this, you know, the suicide ideation piece of it, so it doesn't have that, but in addition to this, it has a grievance process for abusive conduct that's only applicable to employees, but they are very similar policies, outside of that, the definitions and things are all the same.
So 6560 is more clear than 6565, and that's the one we want to eliminate?
Yeah, so we're replacing an existing 6560 that was an updated version of the bullying, last time bullying was changed, I think in 2018. So that's what this policy is, but there was always a second one, 6565, that was not even in alignment with the old 6560, so I don't know why it exists.
So today, we would be voting to eliminate?
6565, and adopting just one bullying policy.
6560, okay, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I really love that number two, and the definition. I wonder, and I know that for our parents and our stakeholders, bullying is an interesting word, and the meaning is not consistent, the understood meaning of bullying, and you know, here we have it, that's going to be in our policy, this is coming down, I think, through state. I'm wondering if there's any efforts that we could do as a district to not only let them know of this new policy and how serious we see bullying and want to, you know, to do the best we can to have our students and our schools free of bullying, but we also, to get to that point, I think it's really critical, we all have also a pretty clear, consistent understanding of what we see as the definition of bullying, so I wonder if there's work that could be done in that whole process to also really educate our stakeholders of, when we say bullying, what are we going to be talking about? Johnny got pushed at the fountain yesterday, he got bullied, maybe he didn't get bullied, maybe he just got pushed, and it wasn't right, and it wasn't good, but he didn't get bullied, he got pushed, and, but yet, spreads like wildfire that that's another example of bullying in that school, and anyway, so I don't know what can be done or how we can work through that.
And I really appreciate your comment, because we are asking for the board to approve this policy in June, so that we have time to prepare for those things. We do use a number of bullying prevention programs, and so we want to update, the definition they have for bullying is different than this definition, so we want to be able to update all of that for our prevention work in schools, be able to change that in the student handbooks, and then every, every student, when they're registered, we're mandated to have them sign off that they've received this policy as well. There will be additional work communicating with parents, it needs to go to SEC again and say, this is the new definition of bullying, and then I'm sure there's other ways we can do that as well, so we'll continue to consider how to really communicate this message, but that's why I think we really would like it, if possible, approved tonight, so that we can work on those initiatives to be ready for the new school year.
Initiative being like, something like this, but has to do with bullying?
Yeah, and I mean, our student handbooks, they have to sign off, you know, that they've received this policy, how we communicate it, just in all of our prevention materials, how we communicate it, you know, to families at home from each school, which looks a little different, but it's definitely, there's PR work that needs to be done with it, and we need time to get that ready.
I agree with that sentiment, as a coach, and also a previous coach, I'm not coaching currently, but, and a parent of students involved in different activities, I know, register my athlete, they have to watch the bullying video, and we've all watched it so many times that we just turn it on and turn the sound off and go through the rest of the motions. Don't do that, pay attention, but anyway. That's, this is another instance where, you know, students that want to participate in activities really do need to understand what bullying looks like, because oftentimes it doesn't necessarily happen in the school, but it can happen, cyberbullying and other things like that, and so just being aware of what bullying is and what it isn't, I think is, yeah, it's great.
I think another big change to highlight from our existing bullying policy that we're hoping to replace today is the very last page where it has the First Amendment rights, that we really spell out that if it's causing a disruption at school, that we have some power to discipline there.
I like that it's all brought together, I appreciate the work that you guys have done on that, so, because it is important that we be aware of what bullying looks like, and also what, like you said, the civil rights things, that it's important to have that clear, so. Any other questions regarding, or comments regarding this policy?
I would just add, you know, I don't want to in any way, I wasn't implying that pushing or horseplay is okay, that's not either, but when we, but when we talk the correct, you know, definition, and we're talking the same thing, we're, you know, even some of our data that our students take, they take surveys and they're asked, do you feel safe? Do you have examples of being bullied? And that data, we use in a lot of areas, and if they clearly also understand bullying is this, and what happened to me yesterday was unfortunate and wrong, but it really wasn't bullying, I mean, our data is even more reflective of what's really in our schools and more helpful to us, so. I think it's well-spent time to try to educate, what is bullying, what is horseplay, what is, you know, all of those things are concerning, but we need to make sure we know what we're talking about when we label something, labeling it correctly, anyway.
Okay, all right, so the next policy, we've already spoken to it a little bit, is the, it's the employee version of this policy, so it's the employee bullying, hazing, and retaliation policy. Like I mentioned, it's very similar to the student one, with the exception that we have the process, the grievance process, if an employee feels that they have had abusive conduct from a parent, and it wasn't handled satisfactorily, that's the big difference between this and the student one.
And when was it that we looked at this one before?
It's been a while, it's probably been about a year, maybe even more.
I think, no, this past year, I think we.
Yeah, because we updated it after the last legislative session, that we didn't get it approved, and then there's been additional changes with this most recent one, that we had some additional.
And maybe we just took it back to the policy committee and not to the full board.
Yeah, I think that's what happened.
What would you know are significant changes on this?
The only change to this is the definition of bullying.
Okay, I thought it was similar, but that's why, that's why I asked, I was like, what did I miss?
Yeah, there's not been any other changes really to this one from the last viewing.
Because we had kind of already updated it quite a bit, I think.
Yes, yeah, this was updated the same time as the other one, so they kind of mirror each other.
Okay.
But the only change from the last viewing is that definition of bullying to update to the most current definition.
Any questions or comments related to that?
No. Our next policy is Policy 4123, this is the nepotism policy for the district. There are a few notable changes to this policy. We reviewed and updated, and in some cases, added new definitions to the policy to align with state code. And then at the end of the policy, we also added a non-retaliation clause specific to the employment of family members or household members of a district supervisor or district administrator, to prohibit retaliation, interference, or undue influence by an administrator or supervisor on the hiring, evaluation, or discipline of that administrator or supervisor's family member or household member. So all the red really at the beginning is updates to the definitions to be in line with current state code, and then the last section is a new addition. So when you're looking at the updates to definition, the biggest one was adding household member and not just relative. Additionally, the definition for what constitutes a town has changed since this policy was first put in, it was 800 people, and now it's 1,000.
So again, it's just the grammatical corrections, as well as the household member, what that definition is?
Household member is part of the state code, not just family, not just relative anymore, so that's why that was added into each of those areas.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then adding the definition of appointee kind of removes some of that language about the funding because that's in the definition of appointee. So it kind of simplifies how that policy is read.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. The next one's not a policy, it's a review of our hiring practices. So buckle in, this one might be a minute. So as we're finishing up our current hiring season, we wanted to just share with the board what our current hiring practices and procedures are at the district. We have a couple of board policies that govern how our hiring practices are rolled out. So those policies are policies forty-one, ten, and forty-one, twenty. In forty-one, ten, the piece that helps govern that is it mentions the veterans preference as well as the Native American preference that is given in our hiring practices. So the veterans preference is required under state law. It requires government employers to provide a preference upon initial application. This can be done if there's an examination required for that position, or if there's not an examination required, it's preference for an interview. And then the Native American preference is a voluntary preference. The district has in place to hire licensed teachers and administrators who will be involved primarily in the education of Native American students or in the programs that are for the benefit of Native American students. Nothing in that policy or preference requires the district to hire for any job where another applicant is better qualified. So in practice, the way these preferences are rolled out is our application requires, and I had some screenshots there of our different pages from our application packet, but it does require applicants to answer whether or not they are a veteran. And then it also requires applicants to self-identify their racial group. So with that information, if someone marks they are a veteran, that goes out on the application packet that our supervisors and administrators can see. And so when we're going to screen for an applicant, that is a column in our screening so that we're identifying those veterans right there, so that qualified veterans get a preference for an interview. For the racial identification, that information is only viewable by the H R department. And the reason for that is that is all of the protected class information, so that stops us from the risk of having supervisors using any of those protected classes to illegally screen applicants. So the Native American preference comes into play at the conclusion of our interview process. If there are similarly rated or ranked applicants, at that point, the Native American preference is essentially a tiebreaker or gets good into play right then. So that's why that preference comes into play because I have that access. If that's needed, I know who qualifies for that preference. So that's forty-one, ten. Forty-one, twenty outlines our entire hiring and recruiting process. So it designates H R as primarily being responsible for the process and also gives a superintendent power to initiate a transfer if a transfer is in the best interest of the district. So those are both listed in there. So at the start, I'm going to kind of go through our practice and have it kind of lined up with how you might be reading that policy so you can see how it actually plays out. So based on enrollment and our funding, a principal or supervisor can recommend that a position be opened. And so to do this, we have our recruiting and application software that they can go enter what we call a requisition. In the requisition, they put the type of position, the title, the position, all of the funding that's going to support that position, the hours required for that position or the F T E for a licensed position. And then that goes through everyone in the supervisory and budgetary chain of command. So at the school level, if they're entering this, it would go to the assistant superintendent over that school, and then it would go to whichever district director oversees the budget they're wanting to use to fill that position. After all of those approvals have been granted, it is then sent to me and the H R department to go through, make sure we have an appropriate job description, which has our qualifications and everything listed. And then at that point, I can post that to our website and open the position for, to start accepting applications. So that's how we go through that piece. And then once we are advertising, we advertise in a couple of ways, obviously on our website, and then all positions are advertised in the Samhain Record. All of our licensed and administrative positions are also advertised in the Navajo Times and nationally on K twelve JobSpot. That's a national website that a lot of teachers use for recruiting, so it's going there simultaneously when we're posting it to our website. So that's where they are advertised. I want to make sure I missed anything. Once we determine we have collected enough applications and we close the job, then supervisors will screen candidates using a screener. And I have a licensed screener and a classified one. The licensed one, if you wanted to pull anything up, Mason, kind of shows just our template for what we're looking for when we're screening for a licensed position. This obviously can be customized if there are other requirements needed for any position, but this is making sure we're only collecting objective data or objective screening points for our applicants. After that is completed, and you'll know on there, we also, like I mentioned, have the, is the applicant a veteran? So we're collecting that right there as well. So after the screener has been filled out, if a supervisor filled it out, H R can fill this out as well. But if a supervisor has filled it out, then it is sent to the H R department to review. Once it's reviewed and approved, at that point, we can begin scheduling interviews and forming our hiring committee. So the hiring committee, the composition of that committee can change, varies based on the position. If you're doing a licensed position, that's obviously the principal and their school supervisor, their assistant superintendent that oversees that sits in on most of those interviews, maybe a couple of teachers from the building, but that just varies based on the needs of the position of who should have some input on how that position is or who fills that position. So during the interview process, our interviews are set up to ensure that all applicants are given a fair interview and that they're given a similar interview. So questions for the position are approved by H R in advance, and the questions are designed to capture the competencies we are looking for in that position. All applicants or candidates are given the exact same questions. There's no additional questions asked. They're given the same time period for their interview, so it is very fair. The hiring committee members, their job, their responsibility is to take job-related notes only. At the conclusion of the interview, all committee members fill out a rating sheet for each candidate. The rating sheet, we again address needed competencies, and they're using the information gained during the interview and also anything in the application packet to help them fill out that rating. Once the rating is completed, it is given to the equal opportunity officer. All of our interviews require that an equal opportunity officer be present to ensure that the interview is conducted fairly and that no one is using any illegal criteria during the interview process. Typically, that is the H R department who sits in as the equal opportunity officer. Those ratings are going to go into a matrix, a screening matrix, that helps us decide who the committee's number one candidate is. So the way that goes in is also very fair because no member of that committee is getting given extra weight in the decision. It is genuinely a committee decision right then. There can be conversation about the applicants at that point. At the conclusion of that, once we select our number one candidate, we are then conducting reference checks with prior employers. Under state law, we are all required to contact anyone where they have worked with students. So those are some of the reference checks required. Usually, the supervisor is conducting those reference checks. Once they receive all the required reference checks, they send that to H R, we review it, and then discuss if we will move forward with that candidate. If a licensed or administrative candidate is selected, they are given a letter of intent. Yeah, thank you, Mason. That's kind of a sample of one of our current reference checks, the questions we are asking. And the reason we have to contact anyone that's worked with students, if you scroll, maybe I didn't get it, is right there, we have to ask about sexual abuse of a child by law. So once the candidate accepts a position, they get the letter of intent if they're licensed and administrative. And then at that point, a request to hire form is completed by the supervisor, and then everyone in that supervisory and budgetary chain, once again, signs off on how that employee will be paid. And that is our hiring process. That was a lot. So any questions? And then you receive those hiring, every board meeting, we have that in the public content.
So I would just add that while we advertise in those places, we also do quite a bit with recruiting so that we are getting a good pool.
At the school level, principals are recruiting in the communities as well.
Yeah, and then we do attend a number of recruiting fairs, Arizona, I believe.
So historically, the district has always attended the U S U, B Y U, S U U, and Utah Tech fairs. But the last two years, we have been able to attend N A U as well, which has been really exciting. Last year, we also attended Dene College. So getting the invite to N A U was really exciting to us, and so we've been on their list now. We've gone the last two years.
And I would just add, you can see this is a very time-consuming, very technical process, and our H R director as well as the rest of our department has done a tremendous job. This is very time-consuming, and they have done a good job filling positions very rapidly, which is really important, you know, as we go into a new school year to make sure our positions are filled. So I just commend your work.
Any other comments related to that?
And I'm just, I'm sorry, can you just reiterate how many committees it goes through? The hiring committee?
So the screening is usually done with just the administrator and then either with H R or then reviewed by H R. So that's not really committee. So really, the committee is the hiring committee, the people sitting in on the actual interview and then giving input on the candidates. So once, they're not seeing the people that have been screened out. They're only seeing those that we're interviewing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to go ahead and move on to the report. Food service, so Anna Fredericks, welcome up.
Good afternoon. We will go through some food service fun with you. So I've listed a few highlights for the year. You can see our meal total is there, how many meals we serve this year, three thousand seventy-two a day, which totals five hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four meals for the year. Our reimbursement amounts this year were lower than last year, by just over sixty thousand. We are awaiting our final liquor tax reimbursements. We don't know what those will be at this time. This number is higher than our school year, twenty-three numbers, lower than twenty-two and twenty-four. So it's our third highest in the last ten years. So it is a little bit lower. We were a little higher post-COVID, but pre-COVID, it is better than those numbers. Meals served this year were eight thousand three hundred and thirty-nine lower than last year, totaling forty-seven meals per day. When you figure we had sixty-eight less students per day when we started in November, that kind of makes sense, that we served a little less food, a little few, fewer meals because we had fewer students. Our second chance breakfast in our high school still is well-received. We're still getting significantly more students to breakfast in our high schools. We served eighteen hundred and thirty-four more breakfasts again this year than last year, which we were up again last year when we started the program. So we continue to see that program rise. We're still working on it as well. In our challenges, obviously difficulties finding new employees, that is a challenge district-wide. I think lack of substitutes to work in our kitchens is always a challenge. U S D regulations, U S D A regulations that continue to change. We have new added sugar rules that are going into effect this year that we have already put into place by the end of this current school year for the next school year, so we're done with that. We are getting ready to phase in more sodium reductions and more added sugar reductions in breakfast and lunch. So sodium reductions are our biggest challenge. We don't add a lot of sodium to our food in general, and we're already buying low sodium as much as we can. Still very difficult to meet the new requirements. So everyone is feeling that crunch as we get ready to phase those in, if they happen. Obviously, there's still a chance that they may go away before they roll in, which they did last time. They were originally, I think, supposed to go in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then they got pushed back. So it may happen again. Food industry is still struggling post-COVID to catch up with food supply. We have many companies who've stopped making products that were specifically for schools. Some of that is related to U S D regulations. They roll out a new regulation. Companies have formulated food based on school regulations, and now they're stuck with things they can't sell because schools can't buy them, no one else wants them, and so companies take us off their list and stop making products specifically for schools. We are seeing more of that, and it's becoming a larger challenge to find things that are formulated to fit the school guidelines. Food costs are obviously up. You know, you go to the grocery store, so our food costs are no different than yours. Food costs continue to climb. Our federal reimbursements are not climbing to meet those needs. They are not matching the pace of salary and food costs. So everyone is struggling. It's something we discuss in our meetings with food directors across the state, that everyone is significantly seeing struggles with making up the extra dollars that it costs to run a program because the federal government's not keeping up with what we're needing. Goals. Our triennial district wellness policy review will be next year. We will work with each school and their community council to complete their individual assessment of their school's wellness. Then we will look at all of those and see if we need to make any district changes. That comes ahead of our twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven school federal review, which will not be this current, next school year, but the one after. So we will be required to have that updated at that time, so we will start that this year so we can bring any adjustments to you that need to be changed in our wellness policy before that, so we can meet all the federal requirements and state requirements for that. We'll obviously continue to check our added sugars and our sodium numbers, start looking at menu changes, alternative menu items, and we're continuing to work on our second chance breakfast program. We have a few challenges with that, but we do continue to work toward fixing things with that program. Any questions?
You were talking about sodium regulations. What are your actual numbers?
I do not have those with me, but I can get those to you. I don't have the actual numbers of what they are. They assess it on a weekly basis. So we assign a sodium count to each item based on what it is, and then we determine how many kids we think are going to eat each item that day. It gives us a number for the day, and then it averages it for the week. And over the course of the week is where we get our, is what our sodium target is. And I can't think of that number right now off the top of my head, but I can send it to you.
Okay. And then another question, you said that there are, you're having troubles meeting the new requirements. Why is that? Is it just because of the food that you're buying?
So currently, we're meeting all the requirements as necessary, and we have met our requirements for the next school year. That required us to lower the sugars, added sugars in milk. Our milk supplier that does our shelf-stable milk was one gram of sugar over the new requirement for milk, so they had to reformulate their entire milk program because they primarily sell milk to schools. So that has already been done. We had new requirements for sugar in cereal, breakfast cereal. General Mills already had done that, so we have already met that requirement, and yogurt. And that has already been taken care of as well. So we already are meeting next year's requirements for added sugars. We will have additional added sugar requirements per week coming out, so those are things that we'll just start adjusting as need be. The hardest one to me is sodium, just because it's getting significantly lower to where we joke, because the kids always talk about, we feed them fake cheese. We don't feed them fake cheese. We feed them real cheese, but it has no salt left in it. And when there's no salt in cheese, it is not very tasty. So that is one of the challenges, is trying to still make the food edible and make the kids want to eat it while still meeting the requirements of the federal government. But at this point, we have yet to miss a target. So every time they've given us a target, we've met it, and we intend to do the same.
Tell me a little bit about your challenge with lack of substitutes. Is there specific requirements for? I would assume they need a food handler's permit.
Technically, our substitutes do not need a food handler's permit, as long as people in the kitchen have one.
Over there do, yeah.
Who are supervising them, yes.
So anybody?
So anybody in the substitute pool could be a kitchen substitute. It's just that they choose not to.
It gets a little harder. I mean, working in the kitchen is not easy. It gets warm. It's really fast-paced. You're on your feet the whole day. And so it's not like, a lot of people may not choose to be a substitute in the kitchen when, when there's other options available. So sometimes we lose substitutes just because they're, if they're a good sub, everyone wants them, you know? So obviously, if you're going to offer me a classroom over the kitchen, I would probably take a classroom too. But that is one of the challenges.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a lot of complaints, like from the students about the food?
We haven't had a student complaint in years. We haven't had a parent complaint in years.
Really?
Every once in a while, people ask us questions about things. Last year, we did a, a trial period. A lot of districts across the state do pizza every Friday, something that comes up. We have a meeting once a month with district directors across the state, and so we all discuss what we're doing in our different programs. A lot of them were doing pizza every Friday, and we thought, let's give it a whirl and see what happens, see if it keeps some of our high school kids in school to get lunch on Friday, see if it changes anything. We had a parent comment about it and question why we were doing it. I spoke with the parent. They completely understood, and that was, that was fine. But that's the first time we've had a parent call in a very long time.
You had a question?
I do. Talking about your changes and proposed changes that could happen, are they good changes? Do you, do you, do you struggle with them? If so, is there a way that, you know, you talked about maybe, I was going to ask you, do you meet with other directors, which you just answered? Can there be lobbying and advocacy all the way up the system?
We do, we do have a lobbying group and a lobbying arm that does that. The head of that attends our meetings monthly, brings back to us what they've done in Washington, what they've been talking about, what we want them to talk about. And yes, we definitely advocate for lower restrictions, for removing some of these restrictions, changing some of the restrictions, loosening some restrictions. It's tight enough as it is, and we've lobbied to remove some of the restrictions, so they're not quite as tight as they are currently, but we just have not been successful at this point. We've obviously, we've gotten them staved off for a while because sodium was supposed to go in quite a while ago, and we've had a reprieve for a while. So the hope is that that continues because that is the biggest challenge. Companies don't necessarily want to make a bunch of no-sodium products, and then things change again, and now what do they do with them? So.
Well, district administration goes and lobbies back in Washington every fall or in spring sometimes, so keep, keep them abreast as to what they ought to add to their list of things to mention.
I had a question.
We would definitely like them to give us a little more money and back off a little bit.
Always. I had a question, well, a comment and a question. I know one of our high schools was really happy with a second chance breakfast. I know that's definitely made a difference, so thank you for that. But my question, how would you fine-tune that? What does that entail?
Just making sure that we're still, we're only serving one student, one breakfast. That's kind of one of the fine-tunes that needs to be, make sure we're doing that. We technically are not allowed to serve a student twice at breakfast. We can only serve each student two meals per day, and it has to be breakfast and lunch. We can't serve two breakfasts to a student. So just making sure that we are tracking that and making sure that we're not feeding the same student a hot breakfast and a cold breakfast on the same day is just one of those challenges of how do you track that, keep track of it? Because at one of our high schools specifically, we have 100 kids coming to get second chance breakfast. And so running 100 kids through that line in five minutes and keeping track of who they were and did they already have breakfast is a challenge. So just kind of fine-tuning that a little bit. I think that's our biggest breakfast is about 100 in our high schools.
Okay, and the reason why I asked that was because I know there was, there was some concern within the community that kids are going home in the evening, and so they'll eat their first breakfast, but they're still hungry, so they want the second chance breakfast. And I didn't know that was something that we couldn't do.
Yeah, and we are not allowed to do that. We could charge them for a second breakfast, but the federal government will not reimburse a second breakfast if they eat two in a day. They will only reimburse us for one.
So something else to lobby for, right?
Yeah. Yeah, because we know we have students that are hungry and that do want to eat twice. Like they honestly do need that food, but there's nothing we can do because the federal government will still only pay us back for one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Anna, we often focus on celebrations, and I think you've kind of touched on that, but what would you, what would you want us to think about something good about what you're doing?
My celebration is my staff. I mean, those ladies and gentlemen that work in the kitchens are tireless. Like they work so hard every day to try to get everything done they need to do. Our high school kitchens, adding the second breakfast, added a whole nother layer of work for them that they were not doing, that now they have to create a whole nother meal every day in the same amount of time they were already doing two in. So making that happen is a miraculous feat in the schools where they're serving a lot of second chance breakfast. But my staff is incredible. My assistant in my office is incredible. Everything moves so smoothly in our department. We rarely have a problem that we can't deal with immediately. And even when we do have hiccups and things, people rarely notice it because our kitchen handles it really well, and our staff just is on top of things in general wonderfully.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you sharing with us today.
Thank you. Obviously, I invite you to come and eat lunch anytime you're in a school and go visit our kitchens. And if you have questions, drop by our office. Happy to show you what we're doing, how we plan our menus, how we decide what we're going to eat, serve our kids, all those things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murdock.
Good afternoon, Board. Mason, get the presentation pulled up. Thank you, Mason. All right. So for special education, it's kind of bittersweet. This is my last presentation as the director for special education. It has been a great journey, and I've really enjoyed the process of learning. Thank you, Mason. And it has been a big process of learning, that's for sure. So I appreciate all the support that the Board gives to all of our programs, but especially our special education programs, where we're serving some of our most at-risk youth and working to help them be as successful as we possibly can. Just wanted to run through, you can see the demographics or the numbers that we have. So for special education, a student could qualify under one of 13 categories. These are the 13 categories and how many of, or how many students we have that qualify in each of those categories. A student can only qualify in one, so those are our numbers. You can see that our largest group and largest group across the nation and in the state is specific learning disability, so that deals with primarily math and reading, writing. The next one would be our speech language impairment, looking at those students whose disability with speech or receptive language or different things like that impair their ability to learn, and then the rest follow along those lines. Next, this is our grade-level breakdown of the number of students that we have in each grade who are served by an IEP. And this is up 10 students from last year, and our numbers do seem to hold pretty steady or climb a little bit. We just have a lot of needs that come out, and interestingly enough, a lot of our younger IEPs are developmental delay or speech, and as we get older, that's when we start seeing specific learning disability or more specific categories. Sometimes if a diagnosis comes, that may help us change. And when I say a diagnosis from a medical provider or a psychiatrist or psychologist that's outside of the school system, that may change a category. Some of our challenges, we received a pretty heavy audit this year from USBE. So working to match the paperwork with the USBE rules and getting all of our teachers trained and writing those compliant IEPs is really a big issue. That's a big lift, and that lift has been heard, and that's why we have hired a special education specialist to join the team next year. That's Katie Lynn Lyman from Blanding Elementary School as the assistant principal. So she's moving into that role to help our teachers work on that compliance piece, along with lots of other things. Just overall achievement of our students with disabilities on end-of-level testing. We want to see higher, better performance. We want to help provide them better educational opportunities so they can achieve better. So that comes from writing compliant IEPs and implementing those. And then we also want to work ourselves out of a job, meaning we want our students to exit from needing those services as much as possible, right? There are some that that probably isn't a reality, but there are some that we could be doing better as they achieve better to exit better. And then also helping our parents understand that exiting from an IEP is a good thing, and exiting from special education is a good thing. Sometimes parents are very nervous about that, so really helping them understand that we do have other supports and services in place. It's just maybe not an IEP, and that might not be appropriate for their child at that time. Also, as part of the special education office, we are over school nurses. So we currently employ three school nurses. We had a total of 11,657 office visits this year to our school nurses across our 12 schools. That's a 25% increase from last year. We had six 911 calls, and that's up from four last year, so a 50% increase. And, and this is related to health office things. There may have been other 911 calls that I'm not aware of, but this is just for health things. Of those, almost 12,000 visits, 696 students were sent home. So we're working really hard to meet the needs of our students in our schools. Several years ago, we implemented an over-the-counter medication order, and being able to provide students medications to help with a headache or upset tummy or a cough or different things like that really has helped keep our students in the building, so that's been a very good thing. I also broke it down by our total elementary and our total secondary. So you can see there's a 15% increase from our elementary, but our secondary jumped a lot, almost by two-thirds of last year over that. So it's, it's pretty interesting to see that. And then I did want to, because we have only three nurses in 12 schools, we can't have a nurse in each of our school every day. So of those 12,000 visits, we saw 4,600 roughly by our school nurse. So we do try to keep track of those, that data. We report this data to the state, to different things. We also get some grant funding where we report this data to. Some of our goals, the first goal is a goal that we're maintaining because we had put a goal date by 2028. Just that achievement for our students with disabilities in math and in language arts, just working to keep that increase. We're working on helping schools that have been designated for low-performing student category of students with disabilities. We're really working hard to see that happen. We are heading to St. George this summer as a team to work, look at our data, to work on improving the systems in our schools for meeting the needs of students with disabilities. With professional learning going along with one of our challenges, we want to really make sure that our special education teachers write compliant IEPs. And if you've had experience with IEPs, it is a lot of work. So really helping give our teachers the tools, the strategies, the skills to make sure that they're writing those so that they can be implemented by those teachers as those students are in their classrooms. And then our third one is just really making sure, and this ties to number two, so really making sure that we're entering relevant and current data into the student's present levels of academic achievement and functional performance or the PLAFUP to develop goals so the students can grow. And that alignment piece, I think, is really critical to helping us make some good progress. So we're really working on that. And again, each one of those is a lot of time and a lot of effort, so we're working on that. The next one, our celebrations, really exciting. We have been able to attract and hire a full-time SLP for next school year with many years of service under her belt, so we're very excited for that. That's been something that we've looked for, for a long time. We also have a speech-language technician who is currently in a master's program to earn her SLP licensure, so we're very excited about that one. Super excited that Spencer Singer is joining the special education team as the director for next year. He's really just jumped right in and started learning and attending conferences and all of those things and being introduced to lots of people who can support him at the state level and across the state as other directors as well. And then just a huge celebration, I echo what Anna says, just being part of a team. This is not just a work that anybody can do alone. So the itinerant team, that would include our school psychs, our nurses, our, our speech people, our OT, our PT, just all those people that we have out and about, our sped teachers, huge, our sped paras, the school leadership who are really taking ownership of students with disabilities and their achievement, and then also district leadership, working as a whole team to really improve the needs or prove the achievement of our students with disabilities. Do you guys have questions for me?
Paul, just wondering, when you said one of your goals was to help students exit the program, what are some of the criteria that you use to, to measure those?
Yeah, so to qualify for an IEP or for special education, you have to be low-achieving, and you have to have some educational impact in that. And so to exit from special education, that means that you are advancing well enough and comparable enough to your peers that you no longer need these extra supports and services to overcome whatever disability is, is causing. And so it's really, there's a multitude of things. So it's classroom achievement, it's end-of-level state testing achievement, it's, we do standardized testing. Our school psychs run a lot of tests, so on cognition and memory, working memory, and just lots of different things that go into that. So as a student can achieve high enough in that, exiting is possible.
Awesome. Just, I have a child who has an IEP, and I am really impressed with his progress, and like you said, so I'm really impressed with your program, so thank you.
Well, thank you. And I wish I could take all the credit for that, but it really is the teachers, the paras, the boots on the ground, the people in the schools that are making that happen, but that is awesome to hear, so. Yeah, and home support, too. That makes a huge difference.
A question related to that. I assume oftentimes, if you are able to get a student to exit from an IEP, they might still utilize a 504 plan?
Yes. And so we would work to implement that with, and a 504 plan is great because it's accommodations-based. So it's not necessarily the pull-out services. It's what can be implemented in the classroom, in the school setting, to help that student still be successful.
Any other questions related to?
I had a question on your home health visits. I know it's three nurses. Are we rotating those nurses throughout the schools?
Yes, so our schools, our, our school nurses are assigned to specific buildings. However, they can fill in as needed, and we've had some health issues with some of our nurses, so our school nurses may go and fill in. But they do have specific assignments because that helps reduce some travel. That also helps them get to know the students and communities better. Sometimes we'll have feeder schools have the same nurse so that as that nurse has them in elementary, they may also have them as a secondary. So we might see similar health issues, especially when it comes to health plans like for diabetics or other issues, maybe migraine or medication plans. It really helps that nurse keep continuity of service while that child is with us in our school setting.
Okay, and to second that, I have an issue with the send-home part. It shouldn't be that high, you know? I'd like to reduce that as much as we could. Usually, what is your criteria for sending home? I mean, I know a migraine can push you out, and that's something that...
Contagious, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are specific things that we do send home. So if they have a fever, if they've thrown up, if there's different things like that, sicknesses that they, we just can't get under control, we would definitely need to send home. If we're feeling that there might be something that's contagious, that requires to go home. Sometimes it's calling the parent, and the parent makes the choice to come and pick up the student, even though we might say, let them wait for a minute. Sometimes, I mean, we work hard to keep our students in the building as much as possible, but if they've got a bad headache and we're a little kiddo, like, that's miserable, right? So they're going to go home. And we, we really coordinate that with parents. It's rare that we say, you have to take them home. A fever, throwing up, those sorts of things will definitely make you...
And I only ask that because I know my own son would be like, yeah, I need to go home, whether it's just wanting to not be at school or not. So I wanted to make sure that's something that we're...
And sometimes we've had sick tummies, and so we will, one of the great things about tracking this is we may track, is it a certain class period in the secondary, or is it a certain time of day in the elementary? Is it always at math? Is it always at reading group? And really trying to hone that, especially if we're seeing it day after day or week after week, we really try to look at that. And then our nurses work closely with the admin to communicate with parents on what that might look like. Are we seeing that there's some fear, anxiety that we could work to address?
Okay, now I can say, ah-ha, I know.
Wow, it's always at twelve thirty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sure.
On your, uh, special education numbers by disability classification.
Yes.
Um, I see a high score in your specific learning disability, so what would that?
So, uh, that is really where it, it could be something along the lines of like a dyslexia or a dysgraphia or different things. We cannot diagnose, but it may be something along those lines where there's something going on with this student, whether it's in reading, writing, or math. Those are the three categories of specific learning disability. It could be all three, it could just be one of them. So there, there is a long history, a year or two is what USBE recommends, of looking at data and seeing exactly what's going on. And does that student perform over time low in that category? And then with some of the standardized testing that our school psychs use, yeah, we can see that like working memory or there is challenges in reading or challenges with, um, math calculation or memory retrieval, anything like that. So we really look at that. And it is a high category, but we are working hard. One of the turnaround or the changes that we're making from our visit back in October from USBE is really looking at that longitudinal data for those students to make sure that we aren't overqualifying and we aren't misidentifying, but that we're really focusing on where the student has a struggle and working to address that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or questions?
Um, moving on outside of this, I know that the special ed, uh, director is now taking over the social workers. How, and I know that's not going to be you anymore, but you are over that director.
Sure, yeah.
How do you see that?
So, uh, I think to clarify, like, I'm not Spencer, I won't be Spencer supervisor, but I will be supporting and doing that. And so I think the biggest thing is working on what, what we've tentatively thought of, and Superintendent, you interrupt me if you need to, is that this would be a school-supervised but district-supported position, looking at it like we do our special education teachers. So our, our special education teachers are currently supervised by their building administration. But I, as the director, have really worked hard to train teachers on the things that they need to know to be compliant, to also meet the needs of our students. So that's kind of what it would look like is how do we work on getting our social workers those supports that they need in their school while being supervised at, in that capacity at their building? Did that answer your question?
Yes, I think so, any, okay.
And this is the proposal right now.
Yeah, and, and I would just add to that, you know, with our, um, a, a large number of our social workers, they also get clinical supervision from Tom Lyman, who's working for the school district. So they're a little different than some other employees because they need both pieces, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, um, we'll go ahead and turn the time over to Tyrell.
All right, um, so this, this policy that's before you hear thirty-one hundreds, um, this was sent out to all of you a couple of weeks ago because of its just length. It, it's a very long policy. And so I hope you've had a little bit of extra time to review that. This is a first reading of this. Uh, to give a little bit of background, um, this has kind of been a document that's been a kind of guiding document for us administratively, um, for several years. Um, it's never been adopted by the board as policy. Um, there's been some changes and some requests from the state board of education level, some of the individual programs, you know, whether it be special education or title programs or CTE or, or several of these other reviews and, um, requests that these actually be like a board-approved policy. So we're bringing this for you, like I said, this has kind of been there. It's been that guiding document, but now we're bringing it to the full board for approval. Which means it will probably come back before you as things change, um, as rules change. We've been kind of just updating that administratively, but now where this is a board-approved policy, like this will be something that you will see. The good thing about this is this will help us, um, you know, communicate the larger message, you know, to all of our staff that is involved with anything financial, that these, these things that we're requesting aren't just things that we just do to be annoying because of different rules, but it's things that we need to do because they are law rule, um, and, and need to follow. So again, this is just, this policy's purpose is really to safeguard all public funds um, in, in many different aspects and being compliant with, um, with state and federal regulations regarding public dollars. And it impacts, uh, you know, anyone from a staff at a school all the way up through the entire school organization and district office administration. So that this, this has a far-reaching effect and, and there's a lot to it. Um, I, I'm just gonna kind of highlight a couple of things and you guys feel free to interrupt me or ask any questions about it because there are a whole bunch of sections here and I'm not gonna go through each one of them. But, but feel free if there's something, as you've had time to review, that you'd like to. Um, I, I guess I will say before I start going through those, you know, the reason this is coming before you as a, and it's a first reading and we do have a request that we adopt this, this month is because this will impact some of our assurances that we submit to the state that we're doing, that we have these policies and we'll be able to say, hey, look, it's on our, our board policy here. It also will impact, um, this is one of the elements of the state compliance audit guide, that the, our auditing team will, that will come in August, will review as part of this. Part of their review this year is policy compliance and, and making sure that the district has board-approved policy. So is, this is a lot, but it is also a request that we have that, that goes through. So again, feel free to interrupt if you have any questions as I go through a couple of these things. Um, the first thing is we're always trying to be, you know, have duties segregated. We are always trying to improve in that area to make sure that those that have certain responsibilities aren't able to access certain things that would, that could potentially lead to fraudulent activity. In small organizations, in small districts, small schools, this becomes really hard sometimes, but we do everything we can to have mitigating controls. And if you remember from our fraud risk assessment that we did, I think it was in April or March, a, a couple of months ago, right? This is another one of those things that comes up. So this is just putting in policy that we are making our best effort to, um, have duties segregated amongst all staff. And then just going through, like, it, this policy goes through and it will touch on everything from receiving money. So cash receipting is receiving money, whether that be here, um, through the, the state, um, funding that we receive or whether it be at this local school level, through all of their actual gathering of cash at events and things like that. It goes through that, it goes through dispersment, so, you know, distributing cash, whether that be in the form of paying vendors and, or whatever it may be, you know, what that process looks like and how we protect it. And there's a lot there. You can see there's, there's a whole bunch of different notes, um, that go on that. And there's, you can see as you go through the policy too, that we try to list, there's an attempt at listing as many code references because a lot of this is governed by, um, by rule or code, but also just generally accepted accounting principles, um, that we try to follow to make sure that we're, we're, we're best utilizing and taking care of, um, these dollars which are public funds. So it goes through, that's the first several pages are those, that process of receipting and dispersing of, of resources of cash. And then there's, um, you know, down on page six is where the procurement policies and procedures and guidelines start. So we're a public entity, we must follow state procurement code. Um, and so this kind of provides an outline and a guide to like what, what the procurement guideline should be for any purchasing that we're doing. Um, and so without diving into each and every one of those, like, that's the next several pages. And then on number seven, this is on page eight of the policy. If you, if you go to page eight, number seven there is just kind of like a, kind of a snapshot of the page and a half that's above that, of the methodology that can be used, like when to use for different purchasing thresholds. The, the state does have a state cooperative contract list and that's what you see there in that first box, that if we're using any of those contracts, that the state has already gone through the competitive procurement process. So outlining these companies that have been approved as vendors. We can use that without having to go through our own competitive process. So that, that's a resource that is available to us as long as there's a category that fits that. And then just continuing, like, the next pages after that are continuing the procurement process. And then we get into time and effort, maintenance of effort, purchase orders, bank accounts. I mean, there's a lot of things in here that we're already doing, that's been our practice, it's been our procedure, and it's just putting this into a policy document for everybody so that we are aware of, of what we're doing and what we're going through. And can show that the public also, this will be a public-facing policy, that this is, this is what the district's financial kind of guidelines and processes are. So with that, I'll leave it open to any questions.
And you already said that this was already being done, this is, all this was pretty much being implemented, it would just be policy now?
Yeah.
You're hoping after today?
Yep.
It's been policy, sort of.
Yeah.
It's just now it's gonna be official.
Yeah, like, we, we've, this has been our practice. Like, I mean, uh, for, for example, like, I, I'm just, as I was scrolling, I'm on bank account and issuances of checks, like, the business administrator has to be a signer and approve all bank accounts within the district. Like, we, we do that. I'm on all of the accounts and, and we've been doing these things. It's just putting a lot of this, what's been as practice in writing as, as a policy.
Yeah, I know as a parent, when I would go into the school and pay for my daughter's cheer account or fees for such, you know, for art or whatever, the check was written to San Juan High School. And that's been policy for, not policy, but procedure for a long time. Although sometimes somebody would forget and say, oh, just write it to me or whatever. And so I think this is great that we're putting it out there because we knew that that was the procedure, but to be able to say this is where it is.
Absolutely, and it's, it's a, it's a, it, we really probably should have done this years ago, many years ago. And it, it provides a, a guiding document for us as we, you know, in, in future months and years, we'll be able to use this as the source of training also as we train staff and, and they have access and know that this is where we're, what we're using, so, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions related to that? It is, it is a long document, but a lot of it is like, oh yeah, I know we do that, oh yeah, we do that, so, yeah.
Will this just be at the BA portion of it? I've seen that, like, for schools, they do the, like, at a game or something, they do the breakdown of that too. So that will be implemented, I mean, even more so, policy on that.
Like, on, on their process for receiving, like, their gate money or whatever? Yeah, so like, I mean, that is part of this, um, you know, and, and I think it's in that first section, in cash receipting. Like, that, that's the expectation is in here that they will, you know, that, it outlines some of the processes of making sure that there's people counting the money, that there's a process for, like, what, what we do when we can't have the money receipted at the office because we're at an event, like, at a football. And so it, it kind of outlines that and saying, this is, this is the best practice, this is what we should be doing. And we also understand that, like, there's always those weird situations and, and we just try to minimize and limit the number of weird situations that we run into so that we make sure we're protecting all those funds. Because as soon as somebody pays to come watch an event, like, that, though, that money that comes in, it is a public fund. Like, it's at the, it's recorded at the high school level, but it's public funds that we've got to treat and safeguard in the best way possible, so.
Thank you.
I'm still open to questions or comments, if anybody has anything they want to address, okay? Well, that was less painful than you thought.
No. Okay, uh, the next one is still me, you want me just to continue? And I've, I've got Steve here with me on this one as well, so he'll help me out when I know I, I will drop the ball and miss something here as we talk about this. So, um, this is bringing back our entryway project. So if you remember back in May, we informed the board, um, of our, our bidding process that we went through. We only received one, um, bid at that time. And so we reopened the bidding process as allowed by public procurement law, just to make sure we were getting fair and competitive pricing and, and going through that process of making sure we were having it open to everybody. So we redid that for both Monozuma Creek Elementary School and San Juan High School. Um, and we received multiple bids, way, way more bids than we had received the first time. Um, and so what you're seeing on your attached documents are the bid tabulation, the bid results for both of those projects. Monozuma Creek Elementary School, we had four contractors that bid on that project and you're seeing the results there that Mason's put up on the screen. The, the low bid on this, low qualified bid on this was Trihurst Construction, um, who, we've had them do work for us in the past. But they, they were the low bid. You can see on here, um, for Monozuma Creek Elementary, the base bid amount, and then there's two bid alternates. One of those, and this is Steve where I'm gonna probably ask for your expertise here. One of those bid alternates is for safety, security glazing, which is still an up-in-the-air thing from the state level. And so that, that part's in there, that's that first one. The, like, on Trihurst bid, you'll see fifteen thousand. And the second one, I'm gonna let Steve explain to you what the second bid alternate is at Monozuma Creek Elementary. I think it was the hollow doors, the... I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Steve on the spot and then not help him out. Hold on.
So, Monozuma Creek Elementary, we have the option to upgrade the hollow metal entry. Right now, if you go to the Monozuma Creek Elementary, there are two doors for egress to get outside. Both those doors almost walk directly into the two great big four-foot-wide columns. The egress means a plate, a means to escape, a means to get out of a building in the event of an emergency. So having those two doors open basically into those columns, it's not the best situation for safety. We propose that they put four doors in those areas. So when those doors open, the egress becomes twice as much as what we have right now, providing a much safer opportunity to get out the doors. The proposal is to replace the entire storefront on the exterior and the interior of that building. And that's what that dollar amount is.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So that's, that's the Monozuma Creek project, the, um, San Juan High School project. We received, we received three bids. We had, we did, um, upon our due diligence, we did actually have one of our contractors that requested to withdraw their bid upon a clerical error that was made in their submission. And so we did have one bid withdrawn. Um, so we did receive two competitive bids here for the San Juan High School, um, office addition. That alternate there is the same thing as Monozuma Creek's for the, um, safety, security film on the, like, doors and windows there in the office area. And again, that's, that's a moving target still from the state. We're still not one-hundred percent sure what that's gonna be like. And so we're leaning towards not accepting, if I'm speaking out of turn, tell me, but I think we're leaning towards not accepting those bid alternates.
Tyrell and I are both in agreeance that right now is not the correct time to vote on this. A big reason why is we only have one vendor in the entire state that is producing the material. If we wait longer, maybe the pricing will come down, maybe, maybe legislation will vote on something different. Things, we see things changing in the next few years. So it does not make a lot of financial sense to jump on the wagon right now, put this glazing on, two or three years from now, find out that we spent money for no reason at all. But on the flip side, we're doing, they're asking us to do it for safety. And what that safety means is that film will give the school about five minutes. It'll post, it'll postpone an intruder from being able to get into the building by about five minutes, giving the administration five additional minutes to lock down, to protect the kids, to do things of that nature. So that's. So that's the idea behind the film right now, it does not stop bullets. All it does is it slows the entrance. If you shoot a piece of glass out right here, it's gonna take an additional five minutes, and if that happens. The hope is that it'll deter the person from trying to get in, and they'll try to go somewhere else.
So on that note too, like, this, this isn't the end of that conversation, as we'll, we'll definitely have more conversations. Because it's, there, there's a rule from the state that we do this, but there's, we have a ten year implementation period for all of this. Like, the window protection in all of our buildings, and so our thought is with this, where it's still in the, up in the air, like, we don't try to address it now. But we'll try to address it, as Steve mentioned, like, down the road, if if more vendors become available, pricing changes, rules might change. But then we feel like we would be getting it right as we try to address this across the entire district, not just in these two schools that are having a remodel project. So we'll address it at that time too, but.
So we can vote on this today without approving the contingency aspect of it, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, the alternate, so we, we would just, the, the motion that we would be asking for and recommending. Is for the board to approve district administration to enter into a contract with the low bidder, in both cases, it ends up being Trihurst Construction that was the low bidder. And an approved administration entering into a contract with Trihurst Construction to complete the two projects that we have bid out, so.
Okay, so we don't need to add anything.
You wouldn't need to.
Okay.
And then we would, we can administratively take care of the contracts based on these bid amounts that were presented here.
And like you said, we could eventually do safety film.
Correct.
But we don't necessarily have to do it right now.
We, we absolutely expect to readdress this sooner than better, sooner the better. In the meantime, we do have other items that are being addressed, security cameras are being added to all the entries, and. There are other items that are being taken care of to promote safety.
Well, these, these two projects are.
Yes.
That's their, their whole purpose is to just help our schools have a more safe entryway also, a secure vest of yield, so. It is a huge improvement. We, you know, on this, in the same vein, since we're talking about these entryway projects. We do plan on starting this construction for both of these projects in the next, well, immediately, as soon as possible. So that it can get started this summer, and it will run into the school year. Steve has worked with both administrations really closely, letting them know, like, hey, are we, you know, what, what the plan is, and, and we'll continue to do so. And the school's aware, like, it may cause a little bit of disruption, but they're super on board for having these projects done and excited to have them done. And so they've, they've committed to working with Steve and, and the contractors and the architects as we, as we go through these projects. So we're excited for the improvement that these will provide to the schools. And are excited for the work to be started and moving forward here in the next little bit. If we get an approval later in our meeting for both of these projects. And then I guess I will also, since I'm, since we're talking entryways, the next. Two projects are gonna be ARL and Monticello High School, which Steve has been working on today with the design team. Just getting some of the scope and as they've been going into the buildings, making sure they know what they're dealing with, they've actually been down here at the two schools today. I'm just looking at that to prepare for that, so later on in this calendar year. The district administration will bring back, you know, those two projects, design, final designs for board approval before we put those out to bid. I think the plan was early next calendar year, so early twenty twenty six, for the work to be done as much in the summer as possible of twenty twenty six.
That's Monticello and?
ARL, yeah.
You read my mind, I was gonna ask, what the next, yeah, plan was, so, thank you.
So, and any questions for Steve and I on this one?
I wish you could all go to see the excitement in the schools. There's a lot of excitement there, I feel like things are happening, there's just, they've been waiting for something really neat like this to happen, and. There's a lot of energy in the schools, and it trickles down to the students guaranteed.
Do you have some drafts or some artists?
Yeah, the, the plans for this?
Yeah, the plans.
Yeah, absolutely, and I can share them with you, we've, we've gone over them in previous board meetings, but I'll share them with you, Dawn, since you, since you're brand new today, but I'll share them with you directly so that you have.
Okay.
Those plans that they're looking at, yep.
I have a question, at Montezuma Creek, there are two, just one door, right? One on both sides of, on the columns, will you turn those to four, and then four, or just four, like, in the center or?
Where there's one right now.
Yeah.
There will be a French door, two doors that open together.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll be two, two doors on the left side, two doors on the right side. So it's actually gonna be a total of eight doors. The front set of section is square front glass, and then the back section.
Okay.
And there will be new doors going into the new administration room for the safety part.
I like a tunnel from the door to the admin part.
Come through, you'll tunnel in, they'll be able to buzz you in with the little button and all kinds of security things that are happening that, in my mind, are very beneficial.
I agree. Well, I think when you say there's excitement there, I think they're getting that from you too, I appreciate the energy and the enthusiasm that you bring to these projects, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right.
The, the next item is just a quick Blinding Elementary School update, just our monthly, you know, progress report, and. So Mason, if you'll just help me go through this, Dawn, here's, here's some renderings of this school that's going on. We need to take you over there sometime and let you see, get a walkthrough of, of our progress. But if you go to the next slide for me, Mason, we'll just kind of jump through, there's, again, some, some of the renderings that. Most of you have seen many, many times over the last, I don't know how many years that we've been working on this, if you'll jump to the next, next for me also. Do you wanna click on that, and we can just watch that real quick here? It's gonna open, yeah, it's a drive file. Are you logged in? It's not gonna work, I'll let you. I just sent it to you, you have it there. While Mason's pulling that up, unless it's, you got it ready? Okay, go ahead. If you move your cursor off, will it lighten it up at all or no? Yeah, okay, so just wanna point out right here, you can see it in this video, you'll see there's a section there that's lighter, that, on the very front, the, that stone that you're seeing. So the stone that's, the darker is the, is what we will have kind of more of as a finished product. They've, they've come and cleaned and sprayed that down, and so they're, they're just waiting on that section there because those windows are not. Are not put in yet, but anyways, just wanna kind of highlight that, that we're seeing more of the finished color work.
Yeah, so it looked more orange initially, and now it's more of a natural sand, yeah.
So anyways, that's, that's where we're at, if you'll, you can go ahead and keep playing, Mason, and I'll talk through a little bit. Yeah, that works. But you can see most of the roof has been completed, there's that section right there, kind of over the admin area, the, that heritage room, or that cultural room there. That hasn't, but a lot of the roofing has been done, our rooftop units have been placed, all of them have been placed. And so, like, you're really seeing the outside of the building get tied in, you can start to see here, like, a lot of the masonry is mostly done all the way around the building. I don't know, I don't think on this you'll see, but they're gonna start. A, a lot of, a lot of the finishing touches on the exterior of this building are going, going up, and, and we'll see that all get completed really quickly. But it's, it's been really fun to see the progress of this building come together, we've, there's regularly, you know, seventy to a hundred and twenty people on this job site working. It's provided a lot of, of jobs in our community, and it's, it's been an incredible project to see it come from what it was to where it is now. Lot of progress, lot of fun, we're excited, we took, we took the teachers through the building just after our last board meeting in May. Right before the end of school and let them tour through, and it was really fun because we've got, some of these classrooms are painted now, and tiles going up. You can see tile in, in the corridor and some of the bathrooms, and so it was just really fun to take the teachers through, you know, they get excited. About the new building that they'll be teaching in, in not next year, but the year after, so a lot of, a lot of progress been made, if you'll jump back to that. Slideshow for me, Mason. And jump through. Yeah, go through the next, yeah, go through, we, we can see that in the progress video, go, don't, don't worry about clicking on those, if you want to, at any point, you're welcome to, those are just some of their images, the three sixty photos that they take. If you'll jump to the next one, just wanna point out, these are just some of the achievements as of last week, you know, interior framing is now completed, so they've completed all the framing inside the building. We've got the stone veneer completed, the skylights are all installed, and I mentioned this in the video, the rooftop units are all installed. And they highlighted this part, like, we are, last week, we were one year from groundbreaking, from when we started. This is just kind of a brief look at the schedule, but we, we remain on schedule for an, an early finish, honestly, from what we originally planned, so.
What did we originally?
Originally planned completion for early June.
So we might beat that?
Yeah, we'll beat that.
So that gives plenty of time to move in and get classrooms set up.
Yep. So this, you know, I, I can't take any of the credit for it, we've had an amazing team from the beginning to now, you know, this, this has been a really. I expected a little bit more of a bumpier ride, honestly, with how large a scale project this is, but, you know, credit to those involved, you know, we have amazing subcontractors, amazing general contractor. It's just been an awesome team effort, it's been a really smooth project for the most part, every project has its, has its hiccups, but it's been great. And we continue to see really fast progress, by the time, if, well, I know that it's part of our discussion later, but if we don't meet in July, by the time we meet in August. Like, it'll be completely different from even, you know, what we're seeing today, there's just a lot that's happening, and, and it's, it's pretty, pretty exciting, anything that you would have to add, Steve, on?
The contingency is pretty awesome too.
I, I think he's like subliminally mentioning something there, just kidding. Yeah, we've, we've got our contingency fund, I think he's alluding to the fact that we had a built in contingency fund. You know, that, that helps us address issues as they come up, and right now, like, currently today, which isn't a perfect picture, but right now, we're actually. I don't know if we'd call it negative in that contingency fund, like, we've added to the contingency fund with certain things that have happened on the project, and so we haven't eaten into that contingency fund. One bit, and so that was one point six million dollars that was contingency. That if we don't utilize, just comes back to district, you know, accounts, and we can use for other projects, so. You know, like I said, a smooth project is directly related to that contingency fund that we have not even had to really touch that, which has been great.
Thank you, that's exciting. Any comments or questions related to that?
And we were worried at the beginning before we started this about the funding, so it's good to hear that we're gonna have some, or we have the contingency to call back on too.
Yeah, well.
If something comes up, we're okay.
Yeah, we, it's still there, and so they're, 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 we're only one year in, we've still got a ways to go, but it's, it's there, and we'll talk a little bit more later on in our, when we talk budgets about kind of the state of our, our capital funding, but. I mean, when we first started talking about Blinding Elementary School being built. We were talking about how we were gonna fund it, and we just didn't know that we were gonna have the funding to be able to do this large of a project. And the state of our capital fund is in a really great place, and we're gonna have millions and millions of dollars that we have left in our savings to continue to do projects across the district. Even upon the completion of that, and, you know, historically, those of you that have been around, we know that we were awarded the grant from the state to help with this. But there's just a lot of factors that have gone into that, but we are in a really healthy place from a capital standpoint as well, as we, as we'll look at a little bit later, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Would it be appropriate to address the retainage pond?
We can talk about it, yeah, there's, there's nothing wrong with bringing it to the whole board.
I don't know if you've all noticed the retainage pond, in my mind, it's nice where it's gonna be a bug pond, a weed pond. We are twain with, more than twain with the idea, we're working towards getting some containers that actually bury in the ground to retain that water. And had it percolate into the ground, cover it over with dirt, so we can better manage that piece of the property. We're in the process of getting pricing on that, we are really close to getting pricing, and the engineering of that is underway. So I can see that being a pricey adventure, but it's going to be a benefit to not just the district, but to the neighbors, to the community.
Does everyone know specifically what Steve's talking about there?
It's that big hole.
You can pull that video up.
Yeah, Mason, can you pull this, this, the site photo up?
I think we were already worried about that in the beginning too.
Yeah, it's.
The plan right now is to fill it full of rock with a weed barrier. And we all know what that does in a year or two, it's no longer a weed barrier, it's a.
Go to that first one, Mason. Yeah, you can get half of it here, it's that bottom left corner.
Yeah, yeah.
That's designed to collect all your runoff water.
All the school water plus all the neighborhood water that the city does not have the infrastructure to catch.
But won't catch any that comes up over the curb, right, because you got a curb out by the road, but yeah, all that that comes down through our property would come.
So when we mention the contingency fund, this, this would be one of those things that we will likely address, and it's, it's to, as Steve mentioned, it's to eliminate. And I, I can't even fully speak to the original, I mean, I think it was probably driven by cost originally, that this, the way it's currently designed is the least expensive. This will be probably several hundred thousand dollars if we move to an underground detention basin, so that it gets caught and it's not visible to everybody else, and it can be. Landscaped over the top of, or, or infrastructureed over the top of, but we would then not have a big hole. That we've got possibly some standing water, it could be full of weeds, it could be full of potentially bugs if we have lots of water, so anyways.
Grade, grade school children.
Also have elementary school children.
Liability issues?
So we're, we're actively looking at that, as Steve mentioned, getting pricing from the contractors and having our design team redesign that, because the more that we've looked at it, the more it just. Just doesn't feel like the right solution for us, so.
If you were to go down the street here and look at the Utah Food Bank, and the nice landscape they have around that, and all along that rock in the, in the front, underneath the ground, is a huge. the ground, is a huge tank to collect all their water. So, I mean, you can see how that looks when it's landscaped over and, and compare that to what you're gonna have with out that. You're just gonna have a big hole right there that collects water at times.
Alternatively, if you've driven, you know, this is a, this is a more relatively new, uh, code requirement, right? It wasn't, it wasn't in place even, I think, five to six years ago. But if, if, alternatively, if you go and look at the new Dollar General in town in Blending, they have a, a retention pond. And so there's kind of that, that, that hole and, and, and dip there that you see. And so it would be, that's what this current design is, is just to have rock in the bottom of a, of a detention pond where water can be collected and stored, so.
There is a Plan B that you could use. I guess maybe a Plan C. Plan A is what we currently have. Plan B would be the containers. Plan C, if you go up north, you can s- you'll see a lot of people's backyards, neighborhoods where they have retainage ponds. It was just grass. They mow the grass. They maintain the grass. But our soil does not drain as fast as it does up in those communities. So we would have water there and it'd be a mess.
Okay. Well, thanks for keeping us updated on that aspect, too. So, yeah. All right. I think we do have at least, yeah, two more things to cover, so.
Jump right in.
So, according to our Indian Policy and Procedure Manual, which is approved every January, um, we bring any, um, citizens' questions or comments back to the board for our Native American students. How does, how does these questions and, um, feedback come? Is that we have, uh, forms in each of our schools that a parent could fill out or a community member could fill out. We also have a link on our district website where comments can come in as well. So these are the comments that have come in in a formal nature. It doesn't mean we aren't getting other comments and suggestions that typically go straight to the school or otherwise. But, and so as part of that process, we bring, um, recommended responses that the board can edit and change. And, uh, we do need them approved because this is part of that Indian Policy and Procedure Manual. So if you'll look at that attachment, it will show you the, um, questions, comments. I think it's interesting, um, because on this, it's a little different sometimes when we have a whole chapter meeting with feedback. So that's addressed maybe in a little less specific way, directly to a parent, as you can see some of the other comments. But we have put a number of, uh, practices in place to respond to those, um, questions and communicating
Any comments or questions related to...
You've already responded?
Yeah, this-
Yeah, most of the, these, you'll see that we respond right away.
Right.
Um, there is, I think, at least a one that will be carried over into the fall for the next chapter meeting, but, but these have already occurred.
Right.
So, um, but we still are required to have board-approved formal responses to them. So that's what this is, is the board will approve this as an action item to say, these are our formal responses from the board. So this is the time, if you want to change anything on here, edit anything, add anything to it, that you could recommend that. And then I can make that adjustment.
And how often do we?
Once a year. Every June, we, we bring this to the board for approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would include the school year? It could start anytime from-
Yep. Anytime from tomorrow on will come next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And these are where? They email in? There's a suggestion box?
It just, oh, where they come in from. So it could be like, I mean, you could see that Anna's chapter members, like, it could come from a chapter meeting. That's a more formal response from a chapter with these concerns. Um, we have written forms that they can, there's just like a tablet they can pull off and fill out and, um, give that back to the school directly. And then also, on the district website, we have a link that they can just do the survey link right on the website as well.
And if we had specific comments at the Impact Aid hearing, those would be included in here or not necessarily?
Not necessarily. Because we, in the Impact Aid hearing, we're answering typically those directly, yeah. Good?
Okay.
Okay. All right. The next item, um, is part of our federal impact aid funding process requires us to monitor access to extracurricular activities. So, and then in our, also in our Indian Policy and Procedures Manual, it states that we'll do this by, our process is by tracking participa- participation numbers, um, for both native and non-native students. And then discussing in a board meeting, um, if we see any notable concerns or trends. You know, we're a little unique in our school district because some of our schools are almost a hundred percent Native American students and some, you know, have very few Native American students. So when you look at this participation data, I just encourage you to consider the demographics of each of our, our schools. And we have not seen any significant change in these numbers from last year. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or comments you might have about numbers. You may see some sports are more popular than others, depending on grouping, so.
I wanna say thank you for printing these out. We look at, we look at these things on our computers and sometimes it just blurs over when you're looking at all of this data. So thank you for providing us with hard copies of these things as well, because that is useful. We have seen these, um, that it helps to see them in hand as well. So I appreciate that.
With the school color or something?
Yeah. Way to go.
Always.
So I, I just have a question on, uh, the ones that are blank. Uh, is that just speak mostly because of, um, non-interest in the schools?
Yeah, so-
So if there's a dash in it, it means it's not offered at the school?
Okay.
So it's not like a spend plan or something that's prepared for that program to be offered? But if there's zeros in there, it means that there's probably spend plan or had been a program, or could be an offering and they're not participating in that. Um, there's one blank spot that we just got members for via text for White Horse for band. And it's seventy-three participants, which is a really high number, um, an awesome group. So I told Kim that I would add that. She just noticed that, what she was doing as online as well. But, um, so that blank for band. Um, the esports in the Hayward is a little bit, was, is in new edition, so not all of the principals were tracking that, but, um, that would be something else we adding. And as they add new programs, like, as a development district-wide, there's something like we've had at one school, but not another. It's something that has just started happening. So, um, that would be a new addition to include there.
And as far as the interest question, so, when we look at our schools and what we can offer, I mean, there's a capacity for your school, for how many students are involved, um, you know, your enrollment. So you'll see that some schools might have more offerings, but they also have more students. So, and yes, this is based upon student interest. So before we add any programming, that really has to come from, um, that there's enough interest to add that program. And oftentimes, if we add a program, we take something away because now there's less interest somewhere else. So that's, when you look at all of these extracurriculars, that's, I, I hope that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
For example, Navajo Mountain, they had a basketball team one year and then they did now.
Exactly. And when you see the spend plan, you'll kind of see what they're proposing. It doesn't necessarily mean that every school that has a spend plan will end up rolling that out. But we wanna make sure that the board approves that spend plan. So if they, if they decide to have that program and they have enough interest, they can do it.
And how soon will the esports or what, or when will that be accounted for?
Um, I sent an email to those, it's summer, so we have a few that are responding as they-
Okay, thank you.
Um, I can email the final list once I add Kim Shafer's numbers and then that, that other from there. I can email you all the final list.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
I have a question on San Juan High School. Says Native American students. There's only, like, four or five that participate since, like, the different sports that's being offered. Is it because they're not interested? Or is it just, I see a lot of, um, a high score on your non-Native American?
Well, I know, like, girls' basketball, there's, uh, twelve Native American, or there were last year, and, and eight non, non-Natives, so.
Yeah, so Lucille, you'll see that some sports are gonna vary, right? So if you look at wrestling, you're gonna see that there's twenty-six Native Americans and only twenty-four non. I mean, that's a, you can see the interest depends. And each year, you'll see that there'll be some change in that as well, depending on what the interests are. And, and just like, um, was just pointed out, that girls' basketball, you have twelve Native American and only eight non-Natives. So it really just depends on the sport, or the club, or the, or arts. I mean, it's not, this isn't just athletics. This is all three extracurricular areas. So it, and, I mean, just to point that out, if you look at Unity Club, um, which is specific to Native American, um, students, but all students can participate. You can see on that one, Unity Club at San Juan High is eighty-three and then non-natives, too. So there are awesome clubs for what it is that they choose to participate or not. Well, participation is not, but the-
The other ones, the responses, yes.
Okay, I think we are ready to go to break. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. See you back in over thirty minutes.
Oh, still not there?
Okay.
Just read it?
Did Billy know?
Yes, he's said he will not be here tonight.
Oh, that's not my part.
No, he, he knows. He's said he's not able to make it, so we can read his-
Okay.
And then we'll award it in a different way.
All right.
Make sure he gets it.
Are we on now? Okay, welcome back. Um, we'd like to begin by recognizing our, um, San Juan Sweet Job Award. And we're presenting that to Billy Malloy today. He is not here, but I'm gonna go ahead and read the, um, accolades that have been given about Billy Malloy. "Billy is one of the easiest-going and calm people to be around. Nothing seems to ever, ever rattle him. He is always willing to step in and help with whatever needs to be done. He is always quick to respond to any issues that schools face. We are lucky to have Billy as part of the San Juan School District team. Thank you, Billy, for all you do." And that was an anonymous commenter. And, um, another anonymous person said Billy never seems to get rattled, which-
Seems to be a theme.
Yes. "He stays calm and always has a positive attitude. He is always optimistic that there is a solution to any problem that comes up. And he, and he supports our school in resolving the issue." And from Superintendent Christine Fitzgerald, she said Billy is one of the easiest and most reliable people to work with. His quick cheerful responses are a hallmark of his professionalism. He is a quiet force working diligently behind the scenes. And though his impact isn't always immediately apparent, it makes a difference. San Juan School District deeply values all of his contributions. So thank you, Billy Malloy.
All right, we can go ahead and move on to the, um, citizen comments portion. Uh, we have two online comments. And, um, it's a little right, Eva, if I kind of just remind the public, the, the purpose of the San Juan's School District Board of Education meeting is for the board to conduct its business in public as provided by law. The San Juan School District Board of Education values and welcomes public comments, so time a lot, is allotted in our meet, public meetings for such. However, to maximize its benefit, there must be structure and consistency to the practice. With that in mind, please know that public comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs, but complaints about school personnel or other persons will not be allowed. Individuals expressing comments should not expect an immediate response from the board. Please understand that the public comment period is not a debate, an interaction, interactive question and answer session, or a dispute resolution, resolution forum. But it is an opportunity for you to express your comments, suggestions, and concerns to the board for our information and consideration. A member of the district staff will respond to patrons who, patrons who request a follow-up meeting or information. Thank you.
Okay, I have two comments, both of them submitted via email. Um, the first one is from Kayla Bradford, a parent with a student, um, participating in extracurricular activities. Um, she states, "In reviewing the proposed revision to the policy for extracurricular activities, I notice that it is not the same as the U-, as USA. USA says, 'A full-time student is defined as a student who has enrolled at all UHSAA member high school for at least half of the periods offered at that high school, or be a senior who is on track for graduation.' My son has been taking extra classes, so his senior year, he will only have the one required language arts credit and plans to take some college classes. I understand his college classes will count towards his required classes, but some kids do not want to go the traditional route of a two-year or four-year college and want to do a trade instead. If the student wants to play sports their senior year, they would have to enroll into non-necessary classes just to fill the four-class requirement. Is there a reason you are leaving out the 'or senior on track for graduation' portion? Will they not be counted in enrollment unless they have four classes, so that the school district will lose funding? If that is the case, then I can understand why the policy is written that way. Thank you, Kayla Bradford." And the second is from Monica Jacobson, another student, uh, another parent with a student participating. "Dear San Juan School Board, I would like to raise some concerns regarding the changing the policy for student activities extracurricular. As stated, the last year, San Juan School District followed USA rules. And if the senior was on track to graduate, they were not required to take half or a full schedule. I have an upcoming senior that has taken as many CTE classes as possible in several different pathways. He has taken summer and concurrent enrollment classes. He is on track to graduate next year. He plays football, participates in Skills USA and FFA. He does not need a half-schedule next year. At the end of his junior year, he met with the counselors and planned his senior year. He will not be the only senior very frustrated to come back in August to find this has changed over the summer with no heads-up. I feel that we should be communicating this change better, and maybe for a later date. If this is affecting teachers, I can res- respect that as well. So again, I would say let's communicate to students, parents, and staff that this change is coming, so there can be some planning involved. Thank you for your time, Monica Jacobson." And they've both requested a response back from the board. All right. Our next portion of the agenda is, we do the consent agenda first and then the budget hearing?
Sure.
Yeah, because the budget hearing doesn't start until 6:15, right? Was there, I don't think there was anything else that we had on there. Is that correct? Okay. So is there any discussion related to the consent agenda before we move on with that portion? I just thought maybe I'd explain to you, even though I'm still figuring it out myself. The consent agenda covers, sometimes it'll even be things that we talk about earlier in the agenda. But we'll have personnel information, you know, you have all these different things that you can look at. And we don't, it's not like action items. We just vote to approve the consent agenda, and then everything on there is approved as is. So that's kind of how that, this particular part of the board meeting occurs, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you have any questions related to anything on there? I'm not saying that you have to, because a lot, oftentimes, we don't even, sometimes we'll point something out, but most of the time, we just, it's more of the same.
Not, not now, but possibly.
Yeah. All right, then let's move forward with the motion related to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion related to that?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe there's any need for a closed session, but just checking.
Do you want to go with the information items?
Yeah. And so, yeah, let's go ahead and talk about the information items.
So we do have a board meeting scheduled July 16th if needed. So if the board determines that there is a need for that, then we will hold that meeting. And then our next in-person board meeting here at the district office after that would be August 5th.
So is that a decision we should make tonight on that?
Typically, I mean, we could make a decision on it if you feel like we need to have it. I think as of right now, it's tentative.
The plan is not to have it.
And if you do want to have it.
So the decision would be to add it back to the schedule.
Okay, so as of, as of right now, we are not having it, and if something jumped up, you would let us know and we'd have it.
The board president would reach out and...
Don't let that happen.
We figure that's the case, usually. And that's a little bit why you've got so many policies waiting for the new school year in June, just in case you do not work to meet a deadline. And then July 4th is a holiday, and July 24th.
It'll be virtual.
Yeah. I would add, it's, it's not, it's not pressing, but the USBA Leadership Academy is the end of September, and they do usually like to have kind of an idea of who we have planning to attend. So if anybody on this board is interested in participating in that, you just need to let me know, Superintendent Fitzgerald.
And we'll send, USBA will send out more details, and then Eva will reach out as well.
And, and, yeah.
Set to one in September?
September 25th, yeah, 26, 27. Okay, I think that's all the information I did.
Okay.
We have National GOM Conference, November 8th through the 10th for 2025 in Denver as well. I mean, that's something.
Do we put Dawn on a committee? Speaking of that, yes, we did make some changes after Nelson left, or I, I did. So I was going to talk about that during. Do we want to? It's not official. Do we want to reiterate MasterClass through USBA too?
We don't have a discussion.
Part of why we didn't put that on the agenda is because we knew that we had a lot of policies. We didn't want to. Fill the space. Yeah, we're just going to have a special work meeting in July. Fourth handbook, I'm just joking, we're not going to do that.
What is due when? November?
Uh, November 5th.
In Denver.
I'm sorry, November 8th through the 10th.
Okay.
One more minute.
So did you get those emails from these two people?
Yeah, that's, that's what she's working on, yeah.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and have the 2025, 2026 San Juan School District Budget Public Hearing. And time over to Superintendent Fitzgerald and Business Administrator.
And I'm going to pass it off to Tyrell Pimpherton.
All right, well, first of all, I, I feel like we all owe Dawn a huge apology to, his first board meeting, he has to get thrown into a budget hearing, adopt tax rates, and adopt a budget for next fiscal year. So, welcome to the school board, Dawn.
It was some very good reading.
All right, well, as, you know, just a reminder, the preliminary budget was shared in our, our May board meeting has been posted online. I, I do want to highlight some of the changes before I start. Well, I, I guess that's going to be the meat of what we talked about. So I'll just talk about some of the changes that were made to that preliminary budget book that we presented in May. So if you'll, if you can follow along with me, and Mason, if you want to help drive on our screen there, we're going to jump down through, we're actually going to start on page 49. And I'll just go through, again, just the changes. So everything else remains the same from our original budget. But this is our centrally assessed property values. So we received those from the county early June. And so I've, I've put those in there, and you can see just the different, on page 49, you'll see the different property types and their totals there for the centrally assessed. Again, that's centrally assessed by the state of Utah for these industries. And then page 50 has a breakdown of the top 30 centrally assessed taxpayers in San Juan County. Just for the board's awareness, these companies provide jobs in our county, they provide a tax base for our county. So we're really grateful for these industries and these companies for the economic development they bring to San Juan County, and then also for San Juan County School District, who, we are beneficiaries of, of them being in our county as they drive the centrally assessed values. So that's, that's all new information, as we didn't have that prior to early June. And so I couldn't have it in your, in your May preliminary budget, but it's been updated. And then this is where we'll get into really the meat of what we're going to talk about today, which is page 51, where we start to see our property taxes. So I want to go ahead and just preface this with the fact that we still do not have the minimum school program or the basic levy. That levy is set by the state legislature. And they do, they do an estimated rate of what they estimate that it will be at. There's a big formula and process that they go through to actually set the exact rate. And so the preliminary estimate was .001408, which matches what last year's basic levy actually was. We still don't have any update on that, and so it hasn't been entered in. We don't know what it is. We also have no control over that, because it's set by them. You, as a local school board, do not have control over that levy. We must levy that in our county in order to participate in the minimum school program, which is a, a huge portion, the bulk of our budget, is derived from state support funding. So we don't have any control over that. So you'll see in here that it still remains at the estimate of .001408. The others, we, after receiving property values from the county, we also receive the auditor certified tax rate. The auditor certified tax rate is designed to try to keep our revenues neutral. And so that fluctuates with the value of property in our county. And so on here, you'll see the recommendation that we've brought to the board for what our tax rates will be. The second line on, if you're on page 51 with me, is the voted leeway, the voted program. That is .0016. For, since I think it was adopted in 2006, our county approved a double 016 rate. And since 2006, we've always levied that. The reason is because between the voted and then the next line down, the board levy, they, it's called 20 increments, which is the 10,000th of this tax rate. If we have 20 increments, so between the 16 and the 4 on the board levy, we maximize the amount of minimum school program, state matching dollars that come through the voted and board leeway programs, which are also a huge chunk of money that we receive because we maximize that match. So you can see here that we're, we're proposing and recommending that we adopt the voted at the double 016, and then the board levy at the triple 04. And then the charter levy that you're seeing there is also updated, but we also have no control over that one. So not one we need to worry about tonight. The, the last one that we do is the capital local levy, which you'll see down below, and that is .002629. So that, those rates combined, the voted, the board, and the capital, if we combine those three rates, it equals the auditor certified tax rate. And so that's what we're proposing and recommending here, that we adopt the auditor certified tax rate by setting the levies at these rates. That, actually, if you'll jump to the next page, Mason, I'll show kind of what that does. The reason we're seeing a drop here, so actually, go, go back for me, I'm sorry. Give us all a little headache because we just scroll back and forth. I just want to point out 24, 25, and 25, 26. So you can see the comparison there. You can see that capital, for the last three years, we've, we've hit the max. So that's actually the maximum we can levy is the .003. Part of that is to receive matching programs that come out of the capital growth and foundation program that the state has. So they provide a matching amount of money, and we buy, it's directly tied to the vote, or to the capital and debt levies that districts levy in their own counties and, and areas. And so you can see that we've dropped there. We've also dropped in the board levy, the voted, we keep at that double 016. And so overall, this is a tax reduction. If you'll scroll down just a little bit, Mason, if you're looking on the screen there, you can see what the tax obligation is for a, a primary residential home with an assessed valuation of $275,000. And you can compare the year to year, and you can see for the, the primary residential and the secondary residential, it is a reduction because we are seeing a, a reduction in our, our tax rate. So then if you'll, if you'll go down to the next page for me now, Mason, onto the revenue side of things, this is, it's not an exact science, it's not perfect, but you can see on the revenue side, the minimum school program, we obviously don't know, but I'm going to point out, on the very top, you'll see assessed valuations. So last year, we were 912 million, and this year, we're up over 1.1 billion in assessed valuation. That's the total value of property and centrally assessed and everything within our county. So that's what's driving the rates down, because as our, as our property values go up and we adopt the certified rate, we're, we're, we're keeping our revenues as neutral as possible there. And so the rate drops as our property values increase. And so you'll see there, you can see as we drop the board local levy pretty significantly, you can see a reduction there. But the voted leeway, because our property values went way up, the certified rate specifically for the voted leeway would have been less than the double 016. But by keeping it there, we're going to see an increase in that one. And then the capital levy is the interesting one, because we're actually reducing the capital levy from the double 03, but we're going to see more local revenue come in, just by virtue of our property values having increased. So there's a lot there. I know there's a lot, and I, I'm going to pause there if there's any questions about our property tax levies, because this is obviously the, the meat, this is the most important thing that we do tonight. I mean, I'm biased, but you have to do this tonight because it's the law. We've got to adopt a property tax rate before June 22nd. So any questions on our levies?
A whole lot of questions, but I get it. I understand that.
Yeah, she came with questions, and then you answered them before she vocalized them. You keep doing that to us.
Yeah, we just covered it so well.
Okay. No, nothing there then? Okay, I'm going to move on then. And we can always come back to that later. But I'll move on to a couple of other changes. Mason, if you'll go with me to page 50, I think it's 52, just the next, no, I'm lying to you. Go to 55. So this is just the summary of the general fund. This has been updated. The biggest update involves the local property taxes that have been changed, now that we know that information. So we've updated the local revenue. But there was also a change from our preliminary budget in the state funding that's being shown in the, this final version. That was an oversight on my part. There was a couple of security, safety and security grants that we received that will be expended in this upcoming fiscal year as we work on some initiatives. And so there was around, I think, 1.8 million that we added into state revenue, but it also increased expenditures because we didn't have them included originally in our May budget. But as we were reviewing and preparing for today, caught that. And so we've increased the state, that, that is a grant, and it's one-time grant funding. So the expenditures match the revenue increase there. The other thing that we have done, though, on the expenditure side, so you'll notice that we are showing like the ending fund balance as a decrease from our revised and projected for this year and next year, we're showing a drop. We're, we're recommending, and it's in the budget on the next pages. So page 56 and 57, just go over the revenue again, there's some changes there. But I, I will point out, like, we did make a change on the general fund expenditure statements, which are pages, really, it's pages 58 through 62. We added some expenditure for those safety grants, but then also are proposing just a one-time increase to some of our maintenance and technology budgets to help with some of these initiatives that we have ongoing. And so there is, and a one-time increase that we'd be proposing and requesting there to help with these initiatives that they have ongoing in this upcoming year. So we did make an adjustment there. It's not enormous by any means, but it did reduce the fund balance at the end of the day. So I wanted to just point that out and mention that we were, we were requesting to do that for those departments to help with some ongoing initiatives. The next, if you'll scroll to 63 for me, Mason.
I'm sorry, Carol.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Is that the professional staff? Because I know, I have a note here, says if reallocated would be a loss.
No, so that's, that goes back to our conversation last month. That, that... Prof, this, that doesn't in fact impact professional staff at all. That's still the same situation we were in last month where the state legislature removed professional staff, moved it to a different line below the line, and so it's not its own WPU program anymore. It's a flexible allocation. So it's still there, money that's still there, but it's one of those things we need to be on our radar because if they decide to make cuts next year, flexible allocation is always the place that gets cut. Okay, great. Any other questions? Um, if you'll, so if you'll jump to sixty-three with me, there was some changes. So I mentioned earlier when we were talking about some of our capital projects. Um, I want to just point out, there was one significant change that I made here, and it's just for simplicity sake. Um, so I'll try to explain this. It may be confusing, but if you have questions, interrupt and ask. What, what I've done here, and this impacts also page eighty-one, which is our building reserve fund. But what we've done is, in the revised budget originally that we proposed to you in May, we had expenditure coming out of the building reserve fund in our current fiscal year to cover Blanding Elementary School expenditures. Um, what we've done on this is just change it to where there's no expenditure out of the reserve fund for fiscal year twenty-five, and that expenditure was moved to the capital fund. And so all the expenditures that will happen for Blanding Elementary School in the fiscal year that we're just about to wrap up will occur in the capital fund and nothing in the reserve fund. Uh, the reason for that is just to simplify so that we don't have two different funds that are funding the same project in two separate fiscal years, in fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. And so what we did to make the change there is then switch. In fiscal year twenty-six, we will spend down the building reserve fund all the way. There still will be some capital fund expenditure, but that was just a, a simplicity thing for us so that we don't have two different funds in two different fiscal years. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to explain there?
Repeat that again, spend down the...
So we will not spend anything down in fiscal year twenty-five in the building reserve fund. In fiscal year twenty-six, you'll see that on page eighty-one, a reflection that shows we're spending it all down next fiscal year, not this year. So just for some accounting simplicity on our end. Um, I do want to point out here on, where are we at? Sixty-three still, Mason? Thank you. If you'll scroll down for me towards the bottom of that, um, or just where we can see kind of all of it, I guess, if you can zoom out a little bit. So I, I do want to point out that this is with all of, so I, this expenditure also, so it's going to include, this is the capital fund. This is going to include nine-ish million dollars for Blanding Elementary School. And then um ten million, or I'm sorry, I could be wrong there. We'll, we'll look at the next page in a second. I'm going to tell you the wrong numbers and feel bad. But it's including the completion of Blanding Elementary School plus ten million dollars for these entryway projects that we have going on. So ten million is a budget for those, and then the completion of Blanding Elementary School. And you can see there, um, right on the, the top section where it says ending fund balance, you can see there that we still are right around, you know, your twenty point eight million dollars at the end of the day, ending fund balance is our proposal, or I guess projected fiscal year twenty-six ending fund balance. So at the end of the day, if we expended all these funds, we still have uh a savings essentially of twenty million dollars for capital funding, which is, is, is awesome. It's, it's a good spot. It's not great, but it is, it is a good spot to be in because we'll still have plenty of um resources to address the other needs that we know we're always going to have. So um it's a, it's a good place to be in. Um, with, with, that's with being able to complete, you know, one of the biggest projects we've done um with Blanding Elementary School as well as significant um changes and remodels to our entryways in four other schools. So between all of that, at the end of the day, we're still sitting in a really healthy place in our capital fund, so I just wanted to kind of highlight um that point. If you'll scroll down, Mason, to the next page for me, um, uh, actually, this is revenue, which no significant changes there, so go to sixty-five, will you? This is the snapshot of the capital. I want to point out something that we've had in our budget for a long time, um, which is this, i- if you see down under remodel projects, miscellaneous small projects, that's money that um we've had in the budget for a long time of five hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's left up to kind of like, uh, really superintendent, myself, buildings and grounds administrator, as we see needs across the district, being able to address them without coming to the board specifically to be able to address those. And that's typically like if the project is under the eighty thousand dollar construction threshold, like our, our team is able to utilize those funds to do some of those things. So like currently, we're seeing some things like that happen. Monazuma Creek Elementary School is, is seeing some interior remodel that's going on that didn't rise to the level of needing to bring it to the full board, but it was utilizing those funds. So that's been a really helpful thing that the board has always adopted. I wouldn't say we've utilized it the greatest that we could have over the last several years. Um, but I, in conversations with Steve, like, we're really excited about being able to have some of these resources so that we can tackle. He, he feels like he can tackle some of these projects that he's seeing that need to be done. So it's really for those smaller projects um that still have a pretty significant impact on schools that they're able to do. We're also, uh, there's, there's another project that he's utilizing this for at San Juan High School um with one of the, their old bathrooms in the main lobby way, trying to clean those up and get new tile laid so that they're, you know, they don't smell as bad and they look a little cleaner. And anyways, I just wanted to point that out, that that's been a really helpful resources, resource, and, and will continue to be. That's that miscellaneous small projects. So this is, this is just a snapshot of the capital. Again, we're at all of our expenditures you're at um in a really good place there. And then again, page eighty-one, if you'll go down to that, Mason. Uh, this, I already mentioned it, so it'll just briefly show you again here that the revised expenditure in fiscal year twenty-five is now showing zero with all of it being proposed in fiscal year twenty-six. So that's what I was referring to earlier there on page eighty-one. Um, oh, I, I guess I should have mentioned, we don't need to go back to it, but on the revenue side in the capital fund, it also has been updated to reflect the new property tax rate at the point zero zero two six two nine, or whatever it was, so. So that's been, been updated as well. Um, that's the only revenue change on the capital side was just with the updated uh local changes to property tax. And then the final change is on page eighty-five, which is our county rec fund, which is our fiduciary fund that we hold for the county. Uh, the reason this is revised is because we actually received um distributions from the county, so distributions that go out to the different entities like Monticello City, Bluff Town, Aneth Jap, I think Aneth area, uh, these different areas that the county distributes the funding to. We got that after our May board meeting, and so we're now just showing that in the revised expenditure because we've distributed that funding. So just a small change there that doesn't really impact anything from our end, but needed to be shown as, as part of the budget, so. With that, any questions on our fiscal year twenty-five revised and proposed for fiscal year twenty-six final budget and tax rates?
So you said twenty million will still be in there, twenty plus, twenty-eight. That's including all four remodels?
That's, that's including an, an estimated budget for the four, because we don't, we don't know yet for sure what the other two are going to be. So with...
Have the estimate in there.
Yeah, so with the two that we just saw the bids for earlier, we're around four and a half million. So that's kind of estimating five and a half-ish million um for the other two. Just because I, I put in here ten for this upcoming year. That may have to be revised based on what happens with those other two projects. So yeah, with, with those four and Blanding Elementary School, still having twenty.
What's still in the general fund?
Twenty, jump to page fifty-five, Mason, will you? Twenty-six.
Thank you, Tyrell and your staff for all the work that you put into getting this together and...
Very impressive.
I'm, I'm good at finding grammatical errors, but numbers, I'm just like, okay, I believe you.
Well, we do, you do have an amazing business office staff. They're, they're phenomenal. We really appreciate each, each and every one of them and couldn't do without them, so.
I'm just taking note because Tyrell said, Tyrell said.
So I, I guess I'll just wrap up then with a comment. So this, this is our, our budget hearing and our tax um setting meeting. And so I do have a recommended action um under your action item that uh is spelled out for the specific levies um to match that certified rate. Um, so if, uh, if and when we get to that point, I just wanted to point out that I, I have put that in there just for assistance and help if it's needed.
I think it'll be needed.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we always appreciate guidelines. Yeah. At this point. Now, do we have any comment related to?
No, no.
Okay.
Good job, Tyrell.
Yeah, that's a comment.
Thank you to you and your staff.
Okay. That means that we need to move on to... Serious stuff.
Do we make an action item right now? Make a motion?
You can.
Oh, we make an action to the budget, right?
We can. Yes.
I make a motion to adopt the revised fiscal year twenty-five budget and the proposed fiscal year twenty-two-six budget, and to also set the tax rate at the certified rate by setting the board local levy at zero point zero zero four, the voter local levy at zero point zero zero one six, and the capital levy at zero point zero zero two six two nine.
And there was an extra zero in that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think in the board local, I think you said point...
Board local levy.
Zero, zero.
And the board level at zero point zero zero four.
Two, another zero.
There's three.
Yeah, there's three zeros.
Zero point zero 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 four.
There you go.
Second. With all the corrections made. With the zeros.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think I said aye. Did I say aye? All right. So we can move on to a bunch of policies. And um... I'm just going to remind that in the past, we've had some policies come to the board, you know, for a second reading, and that's not necessarily required. Um, and, and so even though some of these policies might just be first viewing, we can still pass them today, so.
I would ask, are there any policies that are not time-sensitive, or most of these time-sensitive?
The ones that are time-sensitive, we noted, um, I would say your district data security is not time-sensitive, your policy twenty-two-ten is not time-sensitive. Looking through that, what's left on here. Uh, policy forty-one-twenty-three is not time-sensitive. You could do it in August if you needed to. The rest of them are time-sensitive.
I'll make a motion. Are we at that point?
We are at that point.
I would make a motion that we adopt policy eight-three-ten-zero, district data security, as explained to us in this meeting.
I'll second. Any discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
You're up, Lucille.
We'll just go down the road.
I motion to approve San Juan School District Policy twenty-two-ten, the school district organization eligibility, qualification, responsibility.
I'll second. Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion to approve the San Juan School District Policy sixty-five-sixty-eight, student conduct and discipline, safe schools and interfering device.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion related to that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hey, Dawn, you're up. Get this. Yeah.
Uh, number four.
Yep.
Okay. I move to approve policy six-six-ten with the addition of track and field in section six-six-one-zero-point-four, uh, comma, number nine.
I will second that. Good job remembering that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, any discussion related to that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Back to me.
Yep.
I make a motion to formally adopt San Juan School District Policy four-one-two-eight, salary supplement for highly needed educators as a district policy.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did one of these, did we need to delete one policy as well?
Yes, it's, it's in the recommended action. You want to replace policy sixty-five-sixty-five is being removed, and policy sixty-five-sixty with the new proposed policy sixty-five-sixty.
Have you seen that recommended on there?
That's you, Lucille.
Okay, I move to replace policy sixty-five-sixty-five and sixty-five-sixty with the proposed policy sixty-five-sixty.
I'll second.
Okay, and that's the policy regarding student conduct and discipline, safe schools, bullying and hazing, so.
Bullying students. Okay, student with student conduct and discipline, safe schools, bullying and hazing.
I was just clarifying that. I think it, I think the way that she said it, it doesn't need to be abandoned, so um, and I'm just making sure that everybody knew that's what that was. And if there's any discussion, you're welcome to now, but I think we can go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I make a motion to approve San Juan School District Policy forty-three-eleven, employee standards of conduct, bullying and hazing.
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're back to you.
Okay. I move to propose that we uh, San Juan School District approve policy forty-one-twenty-three, district employment dash nepotism.
I'll second.
Any discussion related to that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will make a final motion here on policy to approve, to adopt, formally adopt and approve San Juan School District Policy three-one-hundred, financial administrative procedures.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a couple more.
I move to approve policy sixty-six-ten with the addition of track and field in section sixty-six.
We're down to number ten if we want to approve.
That's right. Okay. I motion to approve district administration to enter into a contract with lowest qualified bidders tri-hers construction for the completion of both the San Juan High and the Montezuma Creek Elementary entryway projects.
I will second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, I'm up.
Yep. We don't have to do it in order like we have been, but thank you all for being willing. Yes.
Stick to order. I make a motion to accept the official or to give official responses to formally submitted suggestions and comments to improve the education of Native American students and provide equitable access to programs, services, and activities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just want to say thank you to all the district staff that were involved in drafting these policies, in preparing this information for us in the budgets and that, you know, additional financial administrative procedures. We know it was a lot of work. We know we, you know, went through all of that, but it's because you gave us good information and we appreciate it, so. Thank you. Since the information's already been covered, we are good to go. Thank you.
Done for another month? Or maybe two?
Maybe two.
And because we didn't add July onto the action items, I guess. Unless something comes up where we will see you again in August. Some of us might be at various district meeting meetings or whatnot. Can see you in August.